Actually, the house number is 353 Walnut Street. Good evening. My name is John Carter. I'm with the Russell Weasley Company. I'm here representing the applicant, Mr. Mike Egan, who's here in the... He's here in the audience for a... Form a application and plan to create two lots at the corner of Walnut Street and Springwood Drive. It currently, on the assessors map, is called out as two lots, lots thirty-five and thirty-six on assessors plan number ten. So, but that is a... If you saw the... It's two lots, front to back. Here, what we're doing is we're creating two lots, conforming frontage, conforming area, conforming lot width, and upland area. There is some wetlands, as shown on the plan, flagged by Brook Monroe. Flag start from WF Start to number twenty. We had to do a little jogging of the line in the front, as you can see, because of the existing house, to make the existing house conform. It does, because the frontage does wrap around onto Springwood Drive, does technically create lot B to be a corner lot, so that the setback requirements would be thirty feet from the house. We've got thirty-one, seventy-two, and thirty-one, thirty-two are the minimum distances that will be to the existing house. Both lots, as I said, both lots, they're located in the R-30 zone. They conform to, as I've already stated, they conform to the frontage requirements, the lot area requirements, and lot width requirements, as well as they have enough upland on the lot to create a buildable lot. Other than that, I don't think there are any other points that I have to bring out. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the board?
Route eighteen's up here. This is divided into front and back lots right now, but there's re-subdividing it into the configuration you see now. To make two buildable lots.
Someone wish to make a motion?
Make the motion, proven, not required.
Motion made. Seconded. Any further discussion? On the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All four. So moved.
I guess. Somebody has to.
Is that all we have for formase, Liz? Is that all we have for formase?
That's all we have for formase.
While you're signing those, are there any comments on the zoning board appeals? No comments on the zoning board of appeals?
No.
Oh, actually, I do. Zero Brockton Avenue. Is that seven-eleven?
I don't really know.
Zoning board not here?
No. Would it look like commercial property?
It's on the Brockton Avenue side.
The what?
I think it's on the... Down by Brockton.
It is.
Down by the Brockton Avenue.
Down past Walnut on the right. Past Green Street on the right.
It's what?
Seven-eleven's either one or five.
Yeah, that's five-nine-one.
High numbers.
Well, it's an empty lot, if you go down past Walnut on the right, Mill Street.
Yeah.
To its Brockton, couple doors down, there's an empty lot there.
Zero just indicates that there's no number currently?
Yeah. It's an empty lot.
Multifamily use and variance under... Only one principal building at zero Brockton Avenue. So, it would... The request is for a special permit to allow multifamily use and more than one principal building at whatever this location is in Brockton Avenue. Without knowing where it is or what they're doing, I mean, I'm curious, but...
Yeah, they'll have to come before us eventually, yeah. All right.
Chairman, want me to answer the question?
Sure.
Sure.
For whatever reason, this list is zero Brockton Avenue, which is up on Route 123, is Brockton Line. If you know where, if you go by Mill Street, there is a vacant lot on the right.
Oh, he's got his trailer.
I'm sorry?
He's got his trailer there.
I don't want to get anything out of it. Across the street from the... From the condominiums that are on the left side of the street, heading in Brockton.
Well, he's stored a flatbed trailer there for years, so I figured it was his lot. I go by that way every day to work.
I thought you got a house trailer.
No, no, it's a flatbed trailer. I know that lot.
Do you know what the plan is?
Yeah.
Just briefly?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's eleven townhouses condominiums. They are actually brought in and connected by storage and utility rooms. The variance is to allow us to actually break it up into three separate buildings, like typical construction. What if the variance is a granted, they would... They were planned mildly.
That's been sitting there for a long time. I was wondering when he developed it. So I guess it's now is the time. Yeah, Rick, if you go by there, he's got a flatbed trailer parked.
Okay, thank you.
So, going to Brockton would be on your right.
Century Estates, you want to handle it?
Five hundred Washington... Shaun Riley, five hundred Washington Street. Here, we have the Century Estates and developer Richie Rosen from Danica Development, and Richie, sorry, Jack Raven, builder. We are asking to swap two lots in the covenant. Right now, the town is holding eleven lots. The current bond estimate is, I believe, six-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars. They're holding eleven lots under the covenant. We're asking for lots three and four to be released, and nineteen and twenty-eight to be put under the covenant. It's really my fault. The sellers, the developers signed purchasing sales to sell lots three and four. As I was drafting the deed, I checked my list of what's being held, and I realized that those three and four are being held under the covenant. So, closing of the bond pending hopefully are rules. It would be the town, as a result, the town would still be holding eleven lots. Currently selling for about two-hundred thousand each. I think you're plenty of security, but it's up to the board's discretion. Ask you to allow three and four to be released, so that those could be sold. I apologize, I printed it. I left it on my printer. I just called my wife to see if she could go to my office and get it and bring it up here. Any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, sir. Last time we had met, we had had a conversation about starting to get a printout chart just showing which lots, what their current status is, because it gets confusing when we start shuffling these things around.
Right.
And I think that contributes to mistakes such as this.
Yep.
So, I guessing we don't have one for tonight?
We're actually going one step further than that. We're applying for a bond, so we can release the entire covenant.
Okay.
And just get rid of this issue.
So, tonight, you're applying for the bond?
Mr. Rosen's already in contact with the bond company. It's about a two-week application, and then they say it's usually a two-to-four-week return. So, we're hoping, in my letter, I think I said, by the July meeting, we'll have the actual bond in place. We can ask for release of covenant, possibly by your June meeting. We'd like it sooner rather than later.
Yeah, and we had talked about this last time. I just, without being able to see it as a whole, as to what's still left, I just, I don't feel comfortable approving this at this time. Not, it's nothing against Mr. Rosen or the development, but just, I don't... It's getting very confusing, and I don't want to have any more of these kind of...
Well...
Because this is the second meeting in a row now, we've had to come and fix a mistake in the covenant. One of them was, one of the other was at Veterans Place? Not Veterans Place. It was a...
Mistake in the covenant. I don't...
No, last meeting, there was, you had, we had to revote something, because there was confusion about which lots had been released or not. And we had a conversation about wanting a chart that spells out the status of each.
Well, we had a meeting... The last time we were here, a few months ago, we had released a number of lots and had eleven left. And you had said, moving forward, let's have a chart when we come forward to release any further. Our goal was to have PMP update their bond estimate as more work continued over the summer. And so, at that time, if lots would be released, the chart would be presented, so you'd know it was there. We are moving forward with releasing all the lots by putting a bond in place. But this issue came up with the sale of lots three and four pending, but they can't be sold under the terms of the covenant unless they're released first. So initially, I drafted a request to just release lots three and four, which would leave you with nine lots for six-hundred thousand, six-hundred-and-thirty-two thousand dollars of surety, which I think is more than sufficient, but we are actually swapping them, so you have eleven lots. So, I don't think the town's at risk. It's a developer that's well in progress, this thirty-six, thirty-seven lots. And if you've been up there, you've seen these people living there, houses are there. So, your vote of approval tonight will allow more houses to be developed. And as I said, our goal is to, if not June, July, be in there for release of covenant as the middle of the bond.
It's safe to say that, safe to say that we're gonna have a bond, you're not gonna be asking for more releases prior to?
Right, because it, just as it's confusing for you guys, it's confusing for us.
So, tonight's basically a clerical fix?
Yeah. All my fault, not the developer's fault.
Yeah, no.
I shouldn't have told him to sign those PNSs. I just...
Oh, it's fine.
Be honest with me, my secretary picked it up, not me.
Someone wish to make a motion? Motion made to...
Seconded.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So moved.
No.
Shaun, another thing on, if they could do a little better job on sweep, keeping the roads, I mean, a good example is if you take a look at Veterans Place as compared to this place. It's, they, I'm surprised the neighbors aren't complaining.
They have been in discussion with, they've hired area sweeping, that they're gonna be going up Fridays to sweep the road. Take care of that. We had a discussion with Patrick from PMP to give him that update too. Now that the spring is gone, I, it's, we have to sweep it up.
Thank you. This is for the record, I'm gonna know on that.
Yeah, I will. Thank you, and I'll... I'll submit that document to you if it gets delivered.
All right, thank you. Public hearing, site plan review. One thing, on the... We haven't sent a letter yet, because we really... I really got concerned about the extension of the roadway that we've had in our permit on the Rock plans. Obviously, I voted in the minority, but... As, as when the attorney came before us and said, we allowed the road to go another extension on, at Veterans Place, so what's wrong with having an extension on Rock's property? And I explained that it was like a three- or four-foot extension of the road. Now, what we've done with the vote that we had at the last meeting is that we've allowed an extension to go something like eleven hundred feet, which is quite a bit further. And it's typical of what the next developer's gonna come in and say to us. And I am totally concerned about having the roadway blocked out, blocked off, and not being able to run fire hose a thousand feet, because it just doesn't work.
So, this is a part of new business?
This is...
It's not on the agenda?
No. I said that because I noticed some of the parties were out here, and I just thought it was something we could handle quickly. But we'll bring it up at the end if you wish, yes.
Unless we could, no, actually, I spoke with the deputy sheriff of the fire department. I don't know if I have the title right, I'm sorry. But I came, my feeling is that we're... That the dead end has no merit. They're only looking for distance between the fire hydrants of six-hundred feet. No idea where the measurement came from, and they do vary in different towns. But that's not any of their concern. They just want six-hundred feet between fire hydrants, so they can do their hoses. I know when I moved into this town that I used to wonder why they don't build more dead ends, because one of the most safest roads you can build are one-way-in, one-way-out neighborhoods for as far as, you know, people breaking into your homes and your cars and such. But I was actually going to support the extension of a road.
So, in other words, when anybody wants to come in here and build a roadway that's twelve-hundred feet or two-thousand feet?
I think they could...
You're in favor of that, despite the fact that if something happens out at the end of that roadway, there is no way to get the apparatus to the fire?
I'm just talking with the fire department. I don't, I don't... I used to see that as a possibility, but I don't see that's not the way it works. I guess the... Keep this here, maybe you could explain.
Surely, go right ahead. Be worth one of the two cents, I'll tell you.
I agree. I would love to have two acts on everything, including whatever it's way. I'm still trying to be a proponent for that. However, the plans as submitted to our department, I believe it was in the Cuban extension, or whatever it's, I apologize if I forget the name of the street, but of six-hundred feet is... As long as we have the proper spaces, space with the fire hydrants, I think it's five-hundred feet, but it could be six, I mean, we carry a thousand feet per vehicle, per apparatus of supply line anyway, which is more than sufficient. That's just to supply from a hydrant to the truck. And as long as there's a sufficient cul-de-sac, we can turn the apparatus around, because we do have numerous one-way streets, dead-end streets in this town, where we have to back the apparatus up. And not only is it, the real issue with that comes in when there's the ambulance, and we have to, the ambulance gets there first, and an engine or whatever, and everything's gotta slowly back up, so we can get somebody up. Or go to the next call, or it's simply a hazard sometimes. As opposed to if there's a, the turning radius at the end of it's sufficient that we can go up and turn around and come right back up. Pinnell Hill or Springwood, I think, is an example. Patricia Drive, a lot of them have a large turning radius at the end of it. We also have some of the smaller streets off of Lincoln Street that do not. Up off of Brockton Avenue, they do not. They're not that long. However, it's almost irrelevant the length. Once you're in there, you're gonna back up, whether it's twenty feet or five-hundred feet. I agree that, yes, you can have, you know, you have a storm, you have a tree, or all of it could come down and lock it. Yeah, that could be an issue. That could be in any street. That could be in the middle of Washington Street, and we have to cut around time to get there. So, that could happen. That's a risk that's inherent, whether it's a dead-end street or even a main street. If you get one in the middle of Chestnut Street, we have to go all the way around from Brockton to get there. It's, it is what it is.
Yeah.
As long as we have the height and spacing close enough and the turning radius, that's really what we're looking for.
Mr. Chairman, what I was gonna suggest, when I had looked at it, when I was coming, the thoughts, we're looking at some of the existing neighborhoods, actually, what is the one that's off of Plymouth Street, connects up to Pellet, no? It's an extent... I'm trying to think. They probably have about twenty-four homes, twenty-five homes, maybe more than that. But I was looking that, that if we, to set a different number, but based on maybe the number of houses on a particular street, just to limit the size of a, of a development. For, you know, do you know what I'm saying? I know you don't like that.
I understand what everybody's saying, but as far as I'm concerned, if you have an explosion in the street with a, with a, with a gas line, or if you have a disaster, a one, and I understand, and that's been a problem on, as Hancock Street, for instance, that you can't get there, you know, we have to, you know, but at least you can get there, so you can, you can reroute the vehicles. But that's my concern. I've always been against that on the planning board. I was amazed that we actually approved it the last one. And that's why, you know, I thought it needed to be revisited. And the motion was made, as long as the fire department was in favor of this thing. But I personally don't think it's been thought through thoroughly. But I just wanted to bring it up, please.
They're not here tonight, Anderson.
No, 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 but, but it was predicated on the fact that it was fine with the, with the fire department. That was what your motion was, or someone's motion was.
I don't know if I put it in shape of a motion, but I can't...
It was. It was in the motion.
Oh, okay. Then a motion to accept the...
To approve the definitive plan.
Definitive plan.
You know, it was a three-to-two vote, yes.
Can I speak to that, or is there a time when I can, if it's affecting by this?
Well, I, at the end of the meeting, perhaps. I don't thi, I think you're referring to something else altogether, but, which is, I know you're in a butta, but I just didn't wanna... I'd be very happy to talk about it later.
It does affect it, because I don't have a problem with the twelve-hundred-foot of road, if that's what you want, but your zoning or your bylaws say it's six-hundred feet, and that's what I believed it to be, and that's what I thought it should be. But also, it speaks that you can't have reserved strips. If I had a...
No, we're getting into the subdivision, and, and that's not what I want to do tonight.
Well, yeah, the public hearing is closed, so...
Yeah, and the public hearing is closed, so it was, it has nothing to do with that. It's to do with what the fire department needs to have done there, and it was part of that motion.
Any other, anything else?
All right, being six o'clock, public hearing, site plan review, ten Railroad Street. Continue.
Just give us a minute, we're gonna set up the boards.
Shaun Riley, five hundred Washington Street. I'm sorry.
You just have that, so the kitty go public and say...
Apologize, I'm coming for my family funeral, so I'm not as organized as I normally would be. Shaun Riley, five hundred Washington Street, here representing the owner of ten Railroad Street, which most of us in Addington know as the Newland Island Building. With me tonight is Jeff Dirk, our traffic engineer and consultant. I will speak later about his traffic report. And Chi Man, Chi is our engineer, is now on board, helping us out with drainage and lighting and landscaping and the site plan. What you have in front of you is the updated site plan. The only difference on what you have in front of you, than the small version, is we added a dimension of one of the driveway widths that we had omitted, twenty-five feet, which is the code. Just to give you an update, this is a continued hearing for site plan review and for the special permit in the CBD district. An update, we have, based on some of the feedback from the planning board and from neighbors and all, I just want to highlight some of the changes, which is in my cover letter, but just if I could say for the record. We've reduced the number of two-bedroom units from sixty-two bedroom units to ten two-bedroom units. The total number of bedrooms is now reduced from a hundred-and-seventy-four bedrooms to a hundred-and-twenty bedrooms. So, the updated proposal now, what you see in front of you, is ninety-seven one-bedroom units. This is a four-story building. Eight two-bedroom units for tenants. Three studio apartments for onsite employees who will be living in the building. And two two-bedroom units who are, which are reserved for the unit owner. So, that is a hundred-and-ten total units. A hundred-and-five would be actually for rent. The other five would be used by the owner and the three employees. The site plan provides a hundred-and-forty-two parking spaces for the hundred-and-ten units, which translates to one-point-three spaces per unit. Under the CBD district bylaw, you're required to have one space per unit. We always try to get more than that, obviously. We have the one-point-three, which is actually a direct correlation to the apartment building across the street on Birch Street. The calculation, though, for that one-point-three units does not include the seven additional reserved for employee spaces we have. There's three all loading zone and drop-off areas, and there's a two-car garage for two more spaces reserved by the owner. We're not including those in our parking calculation, just to show you the net conservative figure. So, for actual residential spaces for the residents, there are a hundred-and-forty-two available spaces, one-point-three. Plus, we have additional spaces for employees. The Brighton Street, Brighton Street driveway entrance is now shown as being a one-way-only entrance, as was suggested by one of our neighbors, who's here tonight. So, that is now shown on the plan. So, the majority of the inbound and outbound traffic would really be on Railroad Street, which is one of the lesser-used streets in this neighborhood. We've also submitted previously the three-D elevations. We have, I have additional copies. But the building itself, the white building, the old CrossFit shoe factory is going to remain. It's still gonna be a white building. We're gonna redo the outside of the white. What you'll, the biggest thing you'll notice is gonna be a lot more windows, because we're gonna have units. So, the renderings that we've shown you, the exact number and location of windows will change as the architect, architectural drawings are defined. Chi has been working with, and we actually had a meeting at Norwood Engineering with Dave Johnson, to go over some of the details of some of the drainage that's been updated, some landscaping, location of parking spaces, and basically making this work. I wanted to note to you that currently existing, there is parking, existing parking on Birch Street and on Railroad Street. Initially, the police chief did not want anyone dropping off, or having tenants basically have their trucks and furniture deliveries coming on Birch Street, and did not want people backing out on the Birch Street. We, that's why we moved the loading space area into the interior of the space, of the property. So, that's where a tenant who's moving in or moving out would utilize that area off-street. And the employee parking spaces are now assigned over to the Birch Street side as parallel parking spaces, so there will be no one backing out or in. I did discuss this with the police chief, and he's fine with this. He appreciates having the loading area off-street inside, and did not object to the parallel parking on the Birch Street side. Vivian, the owner, unfortunately could not be here, she's out of state. One of our biggest issues was to make sure that the number of units, the number of parking spaces worked for the benefit of the residents, obviously, and to assure that there is, we, we know there is no street parking allowed on Railroad Street or on Brighton Street, and that the plan complies with that, and it does provide enough for all the residents plus guest spaces. We are continuing to work on details. We spoke by email, kind of with the fire chief, I bumped into your deputy chief today, about, we, we're gonna discuss actually working on the radiuses of the entrances and kind of widening it more. By bylaw, a multifamily residence has to be, the driveways have to be at least twenty feet wide, no more than thirty feet wide. And the aisles between parking spaces, if they're two-way aisles, have to be twenty-five feet wide. Everything complies. We have twenty-five-foot wide aisles. We have twenty-five, twenty-four-foot wide driveway entrances. But the chief would like us to kind of widen those entrances a little bit more. more. This kind of came up literally today, so we are going to pursue that, and we will find through that with the chief's permission, and we'll review that through Dave. Otherwise, I don't, I know you have a busy schedule, so I do have Chi here as the engineer and Jeff for the traffic engineer, but I might suggest maybe Dave wants to do, any commentary before, that you wanna use that?
No, we do have a lot going on. I just give a, an overview. I did meet with the applicant and his develop, and the development team when they first went over the comments. I was assured that they would be addressed on the final plan set. I have not had an opportunity, but looking through the plan set tonight, it looks like they've addressed concerns raised in our letter.
Oh, which part, Dave? I'm sorry, I'm just having trouble hearing you.
Pardon me?
I'm just having trouble hearing you. Which part?
I'll start over again then. We, we met on the first of May with the applicant and her development team to go over the, the last letter that I prepared, and I haven't had an opportunity to review the revised plans, but as a result of that meeting, I felt comfortable that they would address the final comments in my letter. There were no overwhelming deal breakers here in my cover letter. It was primarily fine-tuning some of the site planning designs. They appear, by looking through right now, that they addressed my concerns, and we've really had no new concerns since the applicant changed engineers. This is a new engineer on the project, and from what I can see, the plans are pretty complete. And if there's, in the presentation, they may want to go over what they've addressed and how they've addressed it.
Okay, briefly, I'll let Chi get in as much detail as you'd like to. Right now, as you probably know, the existing conditions of the main parking lot, which has been the majority of our discussions, is how to lay out this the best and the safest way. It has been realigned, so we have, again, the 25-foot wide aisles, and now we, we have the perpendicular parking spaces. If you go out there right now and see what is lined and has been there for the last many couple of decades, actually have some photos from 2010 and 2003, the spaces are about eight, eight and a half feet wide, angled spaces. We're getting rid of that, and as you can see, we're putting in landscaped islands along the edges, both edges of the parking lot, and then down the middle of the parking lot. So we're breaking up that big expanse. In doing that right now, the entire parking lot drains towards Railroad Street, towards that north, northeast corner of the building to a catch basin, and the catch basin takes the water underground and goes under Railroad Street to an open collection area on the, next to the train tracks, a gravel area. Water is still going to go there, but now that we put an island in the middle of the parking lot, Chi has designed it, and Dave has begun his review, or has reviewed the bi...
It's a bio-retention swale.
Thank you, bio-retention swale.
Have inlet from the parking lot take on the runoff and do some infiltrations and also provide treatments of the parking lot runoff, and then route to a, the corner here. And we also put in a particle separator, which separate all the T S L and, and oil before we discharge it into the tank system.
Some more advanced B M P.
Yes, it's, we take care of the, the volume and runoff, and also the quality of runoff.
So essentially, that main traffic island, now, when the, when the rain falls on, if you look at the plan, at the top part of the parking lot, it flows towards the traffic island, and typically the traffic island will block it, but we have this bio-retention where it actually goes under the curving, and the landscape area is acts as a retention area with plantings in it, and then it'll eventually flows into the underground drain system to where I described before. The same thing will happen in the, the lower part of the parking lot, or the parking lot closer to Railroad Street. So we're utilizing the landscape area as a drainage collection area also, so it's kind of disguised and hidden. It was actually initially recommended by Dave with the tree filter box, as they call it, and it's kind, this is kind of a version of that, but we're actually using the long strip of it, as opposed to just individual trees. We also implemented Dave's suggestion, put in some of the electric chargers for electric cars, to encourage people to use electric cars. We've updated the loading zone areas. We call them loading zones, they're not true loading zones, under the bylaws, multifamily uses are required to have 18-wheel loading zones, those are for commercial and residential, but we've designed and set apart these areas for the use of tenants coming in and out, or it could be UPS deliveries, or the shuttle van that will be running between here and the T station. So that's kind of an, an open area, you know, a live parking area, it's not gonna be assigned to any tenants. The sidewalks have been updated, there is, there's still the sidewalk along Railroad Street and out on Brighton Street. We will be upgrading those and also creating sidewalks on our side of our, on our property, so that if you park a car, you have a sidewalk to walk towards the building, the dumpsters are screened. We have a significant landscaping plan, and as you may recall, this building, if you look above it, is kind of shaped like a big E shape, so we have two main courtyards in the middle. One of those courtyards is going to be raised boxes for the tenants to basically plant herbs, flowers, whatever it is, individual gardens if they wanna, however they want to plant them, and the other one is going to be more of a, an open park space. Trees, a little reflecting pool in there. It's a significant investment by Vivian, but she has a great view of, she wants this to be a place where people enjoy and can get outside, or at least have a view of the outside from all the various units. She's working with her architect for all the interior designs, but we really haven't given him the green light to go full forward with the details until we know that the, the site plan and the number of units is, is set, and that's what we're hoping the, the board will be comfortable enough with tonight. And if there are details to be worked out, either with the fire chief or Dave, excuse me, we'll continue to do that.
The traffic engineer, do you want to get involved?
Yeah, Jeff, wanna give a review?
Yes.
Vators, okay, great.
So I'll, I'll do a brief overview, and then you could hear from your consultant, whatever it's, whatever's appropriate. With respect to the traffic study, nothing has really changed from what we presented to you back in January. I think the most significant thing, as Shaun had mentioned, was that we did commit to having the Brighton Street access via a one-way entrance. The major component of what we're planning in terms of improvements deals with the Brighton Street, Birch Street, Plymouth Street intersection, which we know is a high-crash location, there's a lot of turning movements going on, and that's the location where we did show as a part of the analysis that we did. We have congestion on the Brighton Street approaches, actually both approaches during the weekday peak hours. So what we committed to do as a part of this project is conduct the road safety audit, which I gave you kind of an overview of what that is, and I know some of you on the board are very familiar with what that is, but that's the first step in identifying improvements at a high-crash location. It's a design shareup, basically, where public safety officials from the town get together with an independent traffic engineer, talk about what's going on at the intersection in terms of safety issues, capacity issues at the location, and then as a result of that, there's a series of measures that are recommended for safety enhancements. So we've committed to funding the completion of that road safety audit. As a result of that, again, there'll be some improvements that are identified, and then the applicant is also committed to implementing what is known as the short-term improvements. Those short-term improvements are generally low-cost, but they're what we would call low-hanging fruit, so they're improvements that can be done immediately, not at a significant cost, but have a high benefit in terms of reducing the number of crashes that are happening at the intersection. Those improvements generally deal with signs, pavement markings, they can involve traffic control devices, they also deal with pedestrian and bicycle connectivity in the area. So the applicant has agreed to conduct the road safety audit and then participate in funding the low-cost improvements. The road safety audit also allows the town to leverage state funding for some of the medium and high-cost improvements or longer-term improvements at the location. So then, the longer-term improvements, which really deal with range, regional planning-type issues, that allows now for the town to apply for grants for state funding for the improvements there. So that, that's kind of the summary of what the mitigation beyond, which Shaun had mentioned in terms of the sidewalk improvements around the perimeter of the project site, pedestrian access improvements as well. You, as I mentioned, you've retained a consultant, they've completed a review of the traffic analysis, they've certified all of the ACTS findings and the methodologies that we use in the traffic study. We did provide a response to the comments that were raised, and they were generally minor-related items, and I think your, your consultants have a chance to review, and review those. I don't believe there's any open items in respect of the traffic study. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have now or after you've heard from your consultant.
Go ahead.
If the RSA, road safety audit is done, and presumably improvement's gonna be needed to be made, would you be looking, who would fund the improvements? Would you be looking at putting this, like, on the Old Colony Planning Council Transportation Improvement Program list?
Potentially. So what we've agreed to do is kind of that, again, the low-hanging fruit, so the short-term improvements, we've agreed to fund those. So basically, we'll do those. The long, the medium, or intermediate and long range, yeah, that's typically, we would go to the Old Colony Planning Council, or I think the town would at that point.
To get on the tip.
To get it on the tip, or, or some other funding source. I don't know if there's other development in the area, and if it makes sense, we could go to some type of grant, a D R Mass Works grant or something, and that's something the town could, could pursue as well.
Well, it's good for, for a project to get on the tip, you know, it has to have a design for it, as you know. So it's, I work for the Old Colony Planning Council, point of disclosure, and I know the tip process. It's good that you guys are doing the design, 'cause if this has to go on the tip, that's a major thing, is to have the design, so that, that's, that's good news.
Yeah, and maybe the board decides, I mean, it may be that you say, give us the design plans and fund some of the short-term improvements, something like that. It could be a combination of both, but the intent is really to address the safety issues there, but then make sure that there's a planning document in the town to go forward with the longer term, so if that made sense to say, as a result of whatever those improvements that come out of the road safety audit, we'd like you to at least deliver some of the design plans, as you know, and it just makes it go that much quicker through the tip process.
Bruce, how long does the, does a, a safety audit take to complete?
It's a day. I mean, you know, the, the field work is a day, and then, you know, typically, you would meet, like, for example, in my office, and get all the parties out, and they go out, and they come back, and then it's a couple weeks, week or so like that, to digest all the data, because a lot of this has been done before you go out. The turning movement counts have been done, the, the traffic volume counts have been done. It's just a bunch of people, like from Mass Art, from the town, from the engineers and stuff like that, going out and actually observing the work, and then, you know, talking about the findings and then putting together. So however it takes to put, report to put together, but it's not like it takes forever.
Actually, the longest thing, I know, is you're actually getting everybody to pre-appointment date, to get out there.
Because it's hard to get everybody to agree to get to a date to actually get out there.
The rest of it is, is very tough.
My preference is if we're gonna do that route, that we have that audit completed and the punch list items, things needed, before we pass approval, so we know exactly what it is. I don't want to approve, there's a vote on this, and find out later that the bill's gonna be half a million dollars to fix the intersections. So I would want to see that completed before we take a final vote on this project, if that makes sense to the board. If I could, that makes it very difficult for us to move forward. It might, I might suggest that you could do something like, it's, you will not sign up on a building permit until this is done, and you can review this. We know that the town typically doesn't have the extra funds to do the road safety audit, and that's why we're, we're agreeing to invest in that and get that process done, because as Bruce kind of alluded, you kind of need that work to, to apply for the grant money or other funding sources.
Well, the fact that they're paying for the design, because that's, that's another thing. It's one thing to do the RSA and the field work, but in order for a project to go forward, someone has to pay for the design, in this case, the opponent is saying that he's gonna pay for the design, so. That's real, you know, Rick, if that makes you feel any better, the fact that they're committing to pay for these improvements, that's really a key thing.
We've committed to doing, funding the implementation of the short-term improvements, because the design plans, depending on the level, they, depending on what's recommended there, it could be a significant cost.
That's true.
We can't go into designing unless the town pretty much elects to do something or wants to do something, is the way I understand it. It's not our road, it's the town's road.
Right, so the road safety audit's gonna cost about $12,000 to be done, that's roughly what it costs to have that.
Right. My, my concern is we get, we find out it's a half-million-dollar bill, and to get on the tip, it's gonna be a five-to-seven-year wait, and this thing's open for five to seven years before the improved, the big-ticket improvements are completed. That's my concern, not knowing what it might be. It might just be some striping and painting and traffic control measures, and we can all move forward happily, but I...
I couldn't imagine anything, like, anything more than that.
I mean, you could do a whole intersection redesign of Brighton, Clinton, Birch.
Well, we don't know until we go out and do the RSA.
Yeah, but I can't...
Try not to speak in acronyms.
But to be, you know, reasonable, I can't imagine this site having enough impact to have to put a rotary or something in there. All I can imagine is making it one-way, some stripes, a sign, but I can't imagine...
We don't know, Jeff, until you get in there.
No, but I'm not talking about a huge intersection redesign. I'm just saying that, I'm just, I'm actually talking about the same thing, moving on with what we know now, and to proceed.
Obviously, one of the conditions of approval on this one would be that we pay for the road safety audit. When that road safety audit has been completed, I would assume there'd be a presentation back to this planning board. At that point in time, I think it would be maybe Jeff, but also representatives of the town, you know, the DPW or whatnot, to discuss what you'd like to do next. Depending, because we don't know what the safety suggestions are gonna be, there may be alternatives or not, but nothing's gonna get done out there until a road safety audit is done. We have to do step one, so we're willing to get, get our foot in the door and at least qualify for funding if there is something the town would like to move forward on. Quick question, how much traffic coming towards 58 comes down Birch Street? Do you have, this is in a quiz, I'm just curious.
No, so, oh, today?
Well, in current conditions.
So I wonder...
I'll tell you why. My, my long-term plan is, I don't think we need, I'd like to see that grade crossing closed. I don't think we need it, and then you take away a lot of the traffic problem, because the only people, on the other side of it, you can access it very easily as well, and I mean, you can, if you need to cross the tracks, you go up North Street, and there's an entrance, it's, it's 150 yards away. I mean, I just think it's an excess grade crossing, and it would solve all these problems.
The chief would tell you, it was a long time ago, when that girl was killed at the crossing. Old Colony did a study, there's seven grade crossings, and we did a study of that, and remember there was talk of closing them and stuff like that? They're still open.
So this is morning?
So that's one of the things that would likely come up in discussion after the road safety audit. That might be, obviously, something that you would want to get the neighbors involved in that decision, and the selectmen and all. I hadn't thought, it's a very interesting idea, and it might be beneficial. I would assume the fire department and all sort of issues, they might, they want to have some sort of way to get through that intersection when they want to, but not let other people. I don't want to speak for your chief, but I know how you think, so, we can do that.
Jason, do you have any comments, please?
Yes, so, I'm from, I'm from, I'm from the, this Jason Florida, I work for Beta Group, and we're hired to review the traffic study that Jeff has put together. You know, we were going through the traffic towns, how they adjusted them to average month conditions, projecting out to a future design condition, you know, called a no-build, so that's a future condition without the development, and then they added their site traffic on top of it. Now, one of the things that really jumped out at me was the fact that this is within a central business district. So there are different types of criteria that are followed, like, for example, the attorney has brought up about the parking spaces, where in the central business district, you have one parking space per dwelling unit, whereas in other parts of the town, it's gonna be a lot different. So what that suggests to you is that not everybody's gonna be driving a car within the central business district. You have a lot of different opportunities, you have, they're proposing a van shuttle, for example, they'll be able to bring them to, or residents to the community rail station. They did not take a credit for that, or a reduction in their site trips when they generated their traffic studies. So that means that their traffic study could be an over-conservative for a worst-case scenario. So they did not take a reduction as far as the van shuttle, they did not take a reduction based on the availability of the sidewalks for everybody trying to go into the downtown area. That's very important, because the impacts that they show within their traffic study are pretty significant at two locations. One being up at North Avenue and Railroad Street, and the other one that Sid Vermaelen already talked about with the road safety audit. So when you're trying to take a step back and look at the big picture of what are their true impacts going to be, I think that the traffic study, and this is based on my professional opinion, that the traffic study is showing a worst-case scenario. So I want to make sure that we're kind of, we have an understanding, because it's within the central business district. If it was somewhere else in town, it would be a different situation. Another thing that I want to make sure of is that the attorney you mentioned about the loading spaces that are identified on the plan. I want to make sure that the board understands that they're, they're identified as loading spaces, they're not designed to the typical loading space for a commercial or industrial warehouse type of development, where they... type of development, where they need to be 24 feet long. So terminology-wise, just want to make sure that the board is familiar that it's not a true loading space for those types of larger trucks. Another item that was brought up was both parking spaces on-site. The parking spaces, perpendicular parking spaces are supposed to be 10 feet wide by 18 feet long. The majority of the spaces that are proposed are nine feet wide instead of 10 feet wide. I believe there's one in Yiddik's, our accessible parking space, is eight feet wide. They're going to have to go for a special permit with the loan board for those parking spaces. Other than that, you know, it's, those are really, all the other comments that I had were really site-related. They provided a designation for where the van shuttles going to be, they put in the dimensions for the aisle widths and the driveway widths, which were not there before. So I think all in all, they're moving forward with the road, road safety audit they're proposing down at Brighton, Plymouth, and Birch Street. I know that they investigated different improvements of what could be done at Railroad and at North Ave. The issue there is, you know, there's limited site distances from the on-street parking. They identified that possibly one of the on-street parking spaces on the south side of North Avenue could be removed to help improve sight lines. That's something definitely that, you know, as far as the delays are concerned, not going to really matter, but as far as hoping to improve safety, I think that that's something that should be specified.
Any questions, Jason?
Currently, what's proposed, are there still parking spaces along Railroad along the side of the building?
Um, or, yes, there are, there are parking spaces that are proposed along Railroad.
Existing right now, there are, there are parking spaces along the entire length of the building to the corner of Birch Street. We have removed four, five, six post spaces, so that'll be green space at the, at the corner, because we don't want people backing or entering that close to the intersection. That was something that was brought up early on in the design, so.
Are there safety concerns from either this traffic standpoint or the fire standpoint, having cars park along Railroad, along the building?
I'll, who are we asking?
Mr. Jefferson. We haven't had a chance to formally discuss this, we will. Obviously, I sent Sean a quick email this morning. Over the weekend, I received his, they did an apparatus study whereby they have the dimensions of our largest vehicle to see if it can actually get through. I got that Saturday. This morning, we actually went out there and physically took the, the tower truck, the largest one, excuse me, to see if it fits, and it's extremely tight. And we're going to have to, I propose that we meet and if it can mark off exactly where you want the proposed entrances to be. I think no matter what we do, we're going to have issues on Railroad Street. If there's, if there's a bicycle park on Railroad Street in the vicinity of that entrance egress area, we're not, we're going to get stuck. It's that tight. We were within inches of the bumper. And it's not that the truck is large, it's, whether it's our truck or Rockland's, I don't think we can get an engine to get in there. Now, aerial has to get close to the building, because we've only got 100 feet of aerial ladder on that. Engines I can park, we can run thousands of the fire loads. Aerials have to get close. So this is a very complex project, it's a great project, but it's combustible, there's a sprinted building full of people, I have to get access to the building. So, and again, this is, I'd rather solve it on paper before anything's cut in the pavement, and I know that we will. So my concern is definitely the parking along Railroad Street. I'm guessing 30 to 50 feet in either direction, there'd be no parking, which opens the doors a whole lot, I don't know what the mechanism for that or the enforcement is, but in order for us to get in there, unless they can somehow open up that entrance a little bit more. We never really had an issue with that, because the entrance was much wider, even though the cars were parked, and this is really narrow enough, I think it's 23 and a half feet on the Railroad side. It's 25 feet on the Brighton Street side. It's very tight if we're heading north, coming from the Plymouth Street, Brighton Street entrance, Birch Street entrance. If we're coming, heading southbound, it was much easier to do that, there's a telephone pole that blocks us. So, you know, that's kind of the normal route we'd probably take with that apparatus anyway. So I'm not as concerned about the Brighton Street side. It would be nice if we can eliminate the first two parking spaces on either side, maybe taper that back, that's going to give us that much more clearance to get in. Again, these are details we can, we can talk about, but it's still on paper. Railroad Street's the issue. Railroad Street's going to be, we're going to have to physically get out there, if we could with you, mark off what you have proposed, and we will show you. Our bumper is inches from that guardrail.
Yeah.
Against the T, which is immovable.
If, if I could, I'm dropping this in your lap. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Based on the, the run-through from the fire department, I was actually onsite this afternoon, measuring and taking some photos, and the deputy chief was there, so we were talking, and we started sketching. Right now, we have three-foot radiuses at the curb. We can easily expand that to make it a wider turning radius for the truck maneuverability, and we can increase the 25-foot current width to make that wider. I sent an email to the chief, fortunately, 45 minutes before this meeting, said I need you to redraft that and do that. So I think we can address the chief's issue. It's really not, Kirk Michael, when he's onsite, the 25-foot aisle, he can go in there, it's really try to maneuver onto the street, off the street. Is where we need to widen it out and soften those radiuses more, which we, we will do that, we can do that. I also want to just, Jason, I just wanted, just because it's on filming.
Could I add to this?
One second, sorry. Jason, you had mentioned the, the loading zone should be 24 feet, the typical commercial, it's really 45 feet for that commercial, but we don't, we have something like, I think you just spoke, you know what, you had a new report. So, I lost my train of thought, but that was, the, the chief has been very helpful with us as, as we've been moving through both in the building and outside the building, so we will make those revisions for both data, the chief's review and for your engineers' review, and I guess if Jason would like to also review it.
I just have a quick follow-up. Chief, does that extend to the head-in parking along Railroad that goes right up to the building? Do you have concerns about that?
We have to physically get out there with the engineers, and they're going to have to mark off, even the new proposal. The, any parking along the Railroad track side on Railroad Street is illegal.
Yeah, and we don't call for that.
Not while we do, that's going to be an issue.
We would pay for the no parking signs. We, we are not designing our building to have parking on Railroad Street. The, the parking spaces that we're showing on our property off of Railroad Street are existing, we've just reduced them by about four. And if you, if you were out there, you know, backing out on the Railroad Street, there is nothing across the street other than the guardrail, there's not opposing traffic on the other side of the street. In reality, the entrance to the building is in the interior of the space, so these are going to be likely the last-used spaces, and it's the owner's reserved spaces over there near the, near the doorway, because that's her unit over there.
I'll, I'll give you my opinion, this is my opinion only, that this has been an industrial site for a long time, so it's kind of been let to develop as it would naturally. But I don't think the town would benefit if that area goes from curb to pavement to cur, to more pavement to building, without a speck of green between there. I think this is a great opportunity to reclaim some green space along the edge of the building. I personally won't support any cars, any cars along Railroad Street on your property or on the street. I think that should be like for landscaping, for green space, and to make sure we conserve space for public safety.
I mean, that's why Site Planner Review's here, we're going to make it the best possible.
I might be the minority, but I would rather see it as landscaping.
If I could make a suggestion, something I've been thinking about, the spot. I wish Vivian was here, because she's really the person to, to think about it. What I was thinking was the suggestion that she dedicate X amount of spots to people who will not own a car, with the following reason. There were two things part of it, and she already added one to it. One was I was going to suggest her putting it on the map, or getting it on some route that people could have a dedicated times, they'd know that there'll be a bus out by their building and they can go off, because she's offering a van. The second part of that is something of product-like enterprise share car, where that company would put four or five cars here, and anybody can use it, they use your credit card, or you call it up and it gives you the code to open up the car, they borrow the car for a couple hours, bring it back to the spot. But I'm, what I was, but with Vivian, it's if, if she sold that type, if that was up to her, an amenity she could offer, like, look, if you're interested in taking this one-bedroom.
A zip car.
Take the car. Yeah, or a zip car, like that, something along those things. That's what I was going to suggest, because this seems ideal, but I thought about who she is, her, I'm trying to think, the Buddhist, the whole thing, and I, I just see that she's got an ideal building and an ideal situation where that could work, because she's in it, she's maintaining it, the building would, that kind of standard would continue as long as she's in it.
I think the zip car's a great idea, and to that, putting it, bringing this up, because Vivian brought up in, some of her other projects, she offers a reduction in rate, in, sorry, in rent, if you don't own a car and don't need a parking space, for that incentive also. As far as eliminating the spaces on Railroad Street, the negative to doing that is, what we're trying to provide is much onsite spacing, you know, preserving what's there as much as possible, but adding trees where we can, so that we.
But what if they don't need the parking?
Oh, yeah, I mean, we can pursue that even more, so maybe, you know, come back to with that issue. We are installing street trees all down Railroad Street that don't exist right now, and also along the corner, and then going up on Birch Street and down back, and again, on Brighton. So, you know, it's, we, the, again, those likely will be the least-used spaces, the ones on Railroad Street, because they're the least convenient. To eliminate them, I'm not sure we'd get much to gain, because there's, those, even though they back out into the street as they have for many a year, that's the least point of conflict, because there is nothing across the street. And that's, again, why the police chief had looked at the ones on Birch Street, because there are residences and people across the street there, and ask them to take away the backing out on Birch Street, which we've done. But it's a work in progress.
All of you received the information from the building, the zoning enforcement officer too? I know. Oh, they didn't, they didn't receive this. It starts out 17552, and refers to parking spaces without reading it all. We went with 193 spaces, and the plan froze at 143. That was explained, because it's being in the, in the central business district. The 17553, the area which would otherwise be devoted to parking spaces will be kept in open spaces and shall not be built on, and he wants to know if this area exists. I'll give you a copy of this, you should work on it. And then off-street's parking spaces, 17543, where it lists the rules and regulations. 10 Railroad Street abuts our 20 residential on Birch Street side, separated only by Birch Street. And then 17550, C Railroad and Brighton Street, and it goes on 17550, C parking, so.
The central business district has its own different parking rules, and there's also provisions in the central business district to encourage the preservation of historical buildings and the reuse of historical buildings in high architectural quality, which this obviously is a historical building in the town of Abington. And thus, it was mentioned earlier, the typical new parking space would be 10 feet. I mentioned earlier, the existing parking spaces out there, they're angled spaces at about eight, eight and a half feet, eight and three. We're proposing the nine, which I think you, this board has seen in many other projects, the nine-foot. Typically, you would need a variance from the zoning board to go from 10-foot to nine, but because it's in the central business district and part of a historical preservation, there's clauses in there where a special permit is to be requested from the zoning board. We would pursue that once we know that the layout is satisfied, the planning board is satisfied with the layout.
Any other questions from the planning board?
I have a few.
Go ahead.
What are the total number of units now?
110.
And that is an increase, correct?
No.
Yes.
Well, depending, 105 rental units, three employee units.
Yeah.
And we had, we had one four-bedroom unit for the, the owner. Under the bylaw, we can't have more than two-bedrooms, so we broke it up, and it's two adjoining units, because she has reserved two units for her own use.
Right.
So.
And the original version.
One of the initials might have been 108.
That was 104.
I don't have it in front of me, but there was 62-bedroom units involved in that number.
Yes, but the space remains the same. We're still talking units that range from 506 square feet, the biggest is 750 square feet.
I believe that, that is still a work in progress, but yes, that's a reasonable summary.
So by comparison, the, the two apartment buildings in Whitman and Rockland, in former factories, start at 650 and peak at 1675 square feet.
Hmm.
So these are very small units.
They are much smaller, they are, some of the units are smaller than those. Those units in Rockland, as you mentioned, have washer-dryers in each, which, which we don't. And we have much more common space, you know, in the first floor of the building is almost entirely common space, with the exception of one wing, which is the purpose of the special permit. I think you've seen the, there's a yoga room, workout room, there's a common room, there's office space, there's a library area. The, the whole idea of this building is to create a community where you're out of the units, you're sharing the space, you're out in the gardens, you're in the common areas, you can walk down to North Abington. It is, I mean, you've heard there's a movement in the nation, that some people are downsizing to even smaller units, and if it's not for you, you don't have to rent here.
The building code just changed the room size to be smaller. It's now 70 square feet. It used to be 120, I think.
Is it?
Yeah.
So, you know, for some of us, you might want more legroom, and you might want that second bedroom for a guest who comes over. This building might not be viewed, but for others.
My concern is that there's no range, that they're all small. You know, it was, I understand the micro movement, but usually, I think as was brought up in the last meeting, it's in a slightly more urban situation, where you have the supporting infrastructure to support that sort of lifestyle. And I'm concerned that this is very out of place for where it's being proposed, that we're not going to have the infrastructure to support it. We don't have, you know, direct walking distance to train stations to rapid transit, we don't have the colleges nearby, we barely have a downtown next door to it. My concern is that when Vivian sells in 15 years, that it becomes a different characteristic, and you still have 600-square-foot apartments, a lot of them, right next to each other.
With all due respect, we can talk about all sorts of hypotheticals, but to your, to respond to so many questions, the water department has confirmed that there's sewer, there's efficient capacity for water, the sewer department is sufficient, best sewer, we have to go to them.
When I said infrastructure, I should have said cultural and lifestyle.
Yeah.
Infrastructure.
Well, well, I think that's part of why some of the businesses are interested, because this is a customer base for some of the businesses, for the health of that downtown. Also, Fulton's Laun, well, I call it Fulton's Laundromat. The Laundromat is right down the street, that's why we, when we went to the water board, we made the presentation that we would not put washers and dryers in every unit to, to further limit the amount of water that would be used in, in the building. It's, it is designed to be, you know, a unique place for people to live and to, and to share their space, and.
I and too many friends have teenagers that are not, not teenagers, 20-year-olds that are not going to be leaving the house anytime soon, because they can't afford to stay anywhere. This would be ideal for them.
Yeah.
It would be a place for a single person or two single people.
She actually has, part of her target tenants is students, younger students who are going into Boston for their degrees or whatnot. That's where the shuttle van would be helping them, so that kids have basically what they need, the kids, I'm sorry, the 22, 23, 24-year-olds, get a van ride to the T, they go into their classes, they come back. They don't need the extra legroom. This might be also for older people. Again, it's, it's tenants, it's whoever wants to live there. She has the screening process with the, again, if you don't rent a car, you don't pay as much rent, sorry, if you don't own a car to park there, you don't pay as much rent.
Other question for you.
What is the exterior of the building going to be, it's going to be clavoured, is it going to be wood, brick?
I don't know the exact material. It's, it's white, we're replicating what's there, whether it's, you know, the cement board siding, which would be, you know, something I'm sure is going to be durable, because it's a tall building. I, I don't know the exact material.
Okay. And the windows are just, single windows, not double windows, or not?
She wants to have as much window space as possible to get light into the building and to have views out of the building. So, and the exact window size dimensions is not contemplated. There's, there's certain required minimums by the building code as it is, both to the size and the number, but I can't speak on, we leave that to the architect.
Yeah. I'm concerned with the exterior architecture, and that, if I look at this, that looks more like a house of correction than an apartment complex. Small windows, lots of in a row, no, no, what are the things, next to them? Shutters, there's no, you know, trim work. Yeah, I mean, that's the guard tower, right? That's unfair. But I mean, there's no shutters, there's no trim work, it's very flat. I'm concerned that there's a lack of design. I would be curious if the architect on the board disagrees, but I'm, yeah.
I happen to love this industrial-style building, so I'm not going to ask anything. I'm directing this to the architect, I'm just thinking of the building versions. In Rockland on 139, I mean, that, that was a factory, and that has a lot of windows. And the shoe factory in Rockland Center, and Whitman Center, the old, you know, the factory was done there. Now, those are factories, and they had limited windows, and now they're apartments and condos, and they add more windows. They don't look like prisons to me. They look like industrial buildings that were converted for residential use, and by connection, they have to have a lot of windows. Personally, I don't think they're an attractive building.
Nor do I, we're not, obviously, the MDA Architects is working on this, they've worked on other buildings such as this, so we're confident it's going to be an attractive building.
I disagree with my board members, I think the Rockland and the Whitman buildings are much nicer looking than what's being proposed here.
Well, this is just a computer-generated rendering.
What are we supposed to look at, then?
Well, you have to understand the business of the construction area. We can't go out and do full-blown architectural drawings of floor plans, plumbing, air conditioning, and windows, until we know that the number of units and parking spaces is, has been established. That would be a waste of time and money to do that. Now, we have our basic layout to confirm that, yes, this will fit, the 110 that we've proposed would fit, that the common areas would fit, the parking spaces complies, and this is a rendering of the building. That, we can give you updates as we go, but I, you know, it's too early in a process to give you the specific final design. I'm sorry, it's conversion of an existing building, it's very, it's a difficult process.
You're asking me to render an opinion on something where we don't have the final version, so I mean, it just, I mean, that's the catch-22 here.
Under the bylaw, the board, you know, would look at the, if it's a New England style, does it fit within the neighborhood? We're trying to reuse the exact same building, but add more windows. Right now, it does look like a factory building, because it doesn't have a lot of windows. This would have more windows with vibrancy and with street trees that don't exist.
And I think it's my role as planning board to make sure we're getting the very best project possible.
I agree, and I live in this town, too, and I'm not saying that you're wrong, I'm just saying, I just can't give you the, the exact details, you know, what the trim color would be, or if there will be trim, whatever, I just can't give that to you at this point in time. I don't mind coming back to the board when we have that, so that you can comment and change things before they go to construction, that's not a problem at all, but at this point in time, it's just far too early in the process to do that.
Anything else, Rick?
No.
All right, Chief, you have some questions.
I just have a non-traffic-related question on the side there. Could you elaborate on, in the open courtyard where it says possible snow storage, what you envision for that?
Yeah, I think, I don't think that that's going to come to fruition, because we were looking, yeah.
We just want access into-
Exactly. Those-
The facade.
The, the planting beds, the raised beds, are actually movable, so in the winter, they could actually move them, stack them, remove them if they need be. And so, one of Dave's earlier comments was, look at possible snow removal areas. So, that was a possible area. Been talking with Dave and talking with Chief, we remove that, too, because it would block access, both to you and also for just residential use.
Any questions from the public? Yes, sir.
Yeah, this, I'm just-
You could just give your name and address, please.
My name is James Oliverio, I live at 45 Brighton Street. I am a director butter, or one of the director batters, back entrance. And actually, I saw the chief there today, and he was, he had brought his, locked his truck down there, taking measurements and driving the truck up and down the street to make the turn. Now, I've lived there for 30 years, and when the Evanses owned the building, that was basically for commercial vehicles and trucks to come in that entrance, not cars. He was very, very good with that, because he knew when cars exited onto Brighton Street, they would back up on either side of the street, either exiting Brighton south or Were the fire escapees, the chief pointed out to me that they wanted to add, they wanted to take that fire escape out and add more parking on the side of that building, right there. Adding to the parking in that area, from one side to the other. Now, I, I know that's not going to work, and I know it for this reason, watching for 30 years, trucks, not big trucks, all different sized trucks, trying to pull in to that area with just one side of cars, which, which is not against the building on the other side, they would have to make multiple turns sometimes, just to get in there. And I put up a stone wall on my property in front of the house to stop them after five years from the trucks driving on my front lawn, because they could not make the turn. If they add vehicles to both sides of the Bird Street exit or egress, I just think that's going to be a very bad move. I just don't, I think, cars can't fit in and out of there. And also, the egress in and out of that. Now, again, I live directly across the street, and of course, I'm a little biased that, you know, I don't want all this traffic coming out in front of my house. But, when the Evanses owned the building again, and they didn't do that, there was never any issue with cars backing up down by Bemis Drugstore, which every day is getting worse and worse and worse, traffic down in that area. You've got eight cars that pull out of Bemis, that back, that drive into Bemis Drugstore, try to back out elderly people, all getting prescriptions. On the other side, you've got a parking area as well. Now, you get one or two cars backed up there in any kind of rush hour traffic, or even in the middle of the day, and you can't pull out. It takes you, it could take you up to a minute to two minutes just to pull out onto 139. I've been there, my neighbors have been there, they know it. And then the other issue is the one I brought up. After all these years living there, I've seen so many accidents at that corner. I think it's one of the worst in the town, because when Bird crosses 139, and then you have Brighton Street, which is one of the biggest factors involved in these accidents. When cars are coming down 139, I'm sorry, 58, and they get to the Bird Street intersection, anyone that wants to cut the light off and get into the square quickly will take Brighton Street, because they want to get in the square, they don't want to go over the line. Basically, I would say over 70% of the cars that go down there are doing that, they're going down there to cut off the lights to go into the square. They food it, as soon as they get there, that's 25 miles an hour. They're doing, by the time they get to, and I hear them food it in front of my house, boom, they fly to the square and disrupt the traffic, the people in the square there, coming up there. It's just, if you're going to do anything with that street, my recommendation, after being there again for this many years and seeing it, is if you made that a one-way street, only coming south, north to south down Brighton, from Bemis Drugstore and out, and don't have any entrance coming in from 58 into Bird Street at the Bird Street intersection there, you're going to see a huge difference in, in traffic incidents on that corner. Huge, there's no doubt in my mind, because I, I myself have called in probably 25 to 30 calls at the police stations on accidents, that people took the turn into Brighton Street, trying to cut off the square, and somebody pulls right out of Bird Street, right in front of them, bam, accident after accident after accident. And so, all documents, all on record, I'm sure you've seen that. Now, you're adding all of these cars, you know, coming in and out. So, I mean, the egress out of this building onto Brighton Street should really be looked at. I don't know whether you can have them just come in, where they can enter it and not exit it, or just eliminate it completely, but I just know the traffic there. Living there so long, I've seen it, I know it, and every day it gets worse. And adding all of these cars is just going to make it that much worse.
Thank you, Tony. I have good news for you, and Meg, I'm not sure if you've heard the beginning of our conversation.
I got here late, so I-
Okay. So, based on commentary from other neighbors, we are eliminating the egress onto Brighton Street. It is only, entrance only, so there will be no traffic going onto Brighton Street.
Entrance only.
Right, if you're on Brighton Street-
No exit.
Exactly. So, that, well, those reasons that you did, some of your neighbors-
Well, that would help.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that would help.
And, again, I'm not sure what you missed earlier, but our traffic consultant and the town's traffic consultant reviewed that the project owner is going to pay for a road safety audit of the Bird Street, Brighton Street, Plymouth Street intersection, which is preliminary stage where you have, where the town, state, county will get out there and basically survey research that intersection, what can be the immediate improvements and what could be long-term improvements. We're paying for that study, I won't rehash it, we went to the board. So, the two main things that you just brought up, we have in our address, and we've already agreed to do that.
Okay, great, well, that's great.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Erica Belton, I live at 55 Brighton Street, so right on the intersection of Brighton and Plymouth. I just have two brief comments. The first relating to the traffic and the parking, I understand it was 1.3 parking spaces per unit. I expect that the people living in this building will have guests, who will obviously need someplace to park. So, my thought, if I were to visit that unit, is that I would consider parking up on North Street over by the pharmacy. Now, living on Brighton Street, when I commute to work, I go out and I turn left up on the Brighton Street, North Street intersection, and the street parking there runs right up to that intersection. So, in the morning, when I'm trying to pull out, I cannot see anything, because it's always a car or a truck or an SUV. I have to pull halfway out into the road before I make that turn, and it is extremely dangerous. So, that's something that I would want to be considered in that traffic study, is the potential for that parking being even more crowded, and perhaps cutting away a couple of those spaces right at the intersection of Brighton Street and North Street, because it is very dangerous. The second thing, I noted this the last time I was here, and it was indicating to me that it was taken care of, but there's a fire escape right on Brighton Street that I've seen on numerous occasions, I've seen children climbing up on that fire escape unattended, and I was told it was taken care of, however, I've still seen that, and I think that that should be addressed, because it does go up quite high, and I would hate to see anything happen to any of these unsupervised children.
We are, part of the building remodel is to bring it entirely up to the current fire safety code, the fire chief knows much more about this than I do, and current building code, so you like, will see relocated and reconstructed fire access stairwells.
Oh, of course, I just, it's maybe something to close it off to the kids who are parking their bikes and running up it, it would be good.
Yeah, I guess we'd have to check that out with the fire-
I wasn't aware that those are dangerous, we don't use those ourselves.
Yeah.
We don't trust them.
If he allows us to remove it, will you like, be able to do that, I'll-
Okay. And one last thing from me. There's a woman that lives next door to this building, Thelma, I can't remember her last name. She has put up for years with the smoking area, it used to be right in front of her house, three picnic tables. At break time, there would be 40, 50 people smoking cigarettes there, looking directly into her windows and doors, a small fence that was like four and a half feet tall. I just don't want to see that happen again.
Nor do I.
Because I had an issue with the Evanses over it, and I actually went to the state to try to, to try to stop it, and he finally addressed it and stopped it at the very end, like two months before they closed the building. But I don't know, like, smoking, you know, watching it for so many years, but Thelma, on that side of the building, where the park, where they proposed their parking, whatever fence they put up there or something that butts her driveway, should be tall enough where people can't be standing there and looking into her windows and giving her a little more privacy. And I'm just saying this to speak for Thelma, because Thelma can't make it here. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Rick?
I'm sorry if I missed this, can you walk me through this bioretention strip and the median? Go on with it.
So, the parking lot layout such that this pitch from the northwest corner, runoff coming down this way.
Mm-hmm.
We are installing a middle island. Middle island will have three inlet, where the runoff will enter the inlet into a four-foot wide bioretention strip.
Yep.
And that bioretention strip is about a foot lower than the pavement, so the rainwater will enter into the bioretention area. They will, more like retentions, collect, rainwater will be part of, it will infiltrate into the ground, and when it's overflow, we have overflow system that collects the overflow and pipe into the, first of, first of all, is go for a particle separator along the other parking lot, parking lot runoff, we treat them, if we release them to the town system. And the other thing I want to broaden up is part of the sustainability design, the low-impact development design. We are capturing parts of the roof water moving adjacent to the two courtyards. Each of the courtyards is going to have a 10,000 gallon reuse tank. We are going, we are going to retain, connect the rainwater, and we use on site for planting and irrigations. And then when the tanks overflow, it go into these recharge galleries that recharge the groundwater. And we also have a overflow system that's used by pump, you know, excess water will pump into the parking lot collection system.
What is the bioretention strip made out of?
We have a little detailed, so the strip itself will have sidewalk on both sides, focal sidewalk, and the depressed area and, and, you know, in the middle, basically soil. We have something called the bioretention soil mix, which is a 40% 30% compost and 30% lawn, which is highly permeable soil material, that's also provide treatment of the runoff. And it will be planted with some ornamental grass and some, they call the wet darkwood trees, which is some type of bioretention printing material, that's, that's going to help filtering out the runoff.
How many trees, how many trees and plantings are we talking about in that middle strip?
I believe it's three trees per section, there are three sections of the bioretention area, and then 41 gallons part of those ornamental grass.
So, three trees on the left-hand side of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the strip is only four foot wide, it doesn't give us opportunity to plant anything.
Well, that's, that's the other problem I have with it, is that it's, you know, eight feet of concrete and four feet of dirt and plants and trees. I mean, our bylaw, I assume you're going to be requesting waivers for certain rules from our bylaws for tree plantings in parking lots?
We are planting trees in parking lots, and we're planting street trees. We have to create some walkways for pedestrian egress, you know, walkways to the building, I'm not sure.
These trees are part of the bioretention system.
Yes.
As opposed, as opposed to plantings in the parking lot.
Yes, the tree will be in the-
No, I understand, but for instance, we have a rule that says, minimum of 10 feet, suitable landscaping, buffer strip along railroad, which we don't have. And then if you get into the middle islands, there's requirements for how many trees are supposed to be there for every linear feet, how, what size the island is supposed to be. be, and this doesn't, my understanding is this doesn't live up to that standard. It's supposed to be at least five-foot vegetative strip, not ten feet.
Yeah, in the, in the CBD district, there are lower requirements, and there's waivers allowed the board can, again, to.
Yes.
To emphasize the, encourage reuse of existing buildings, not to tear down historical buildings.
Parking lot shall contain visual relief from vast expenses. In parking areas exceeding a quarter acre but less than one acre, landscaping trees containing landscaping islands containing trees greater than six feet in height shall be provided at a rate of at least six per eighty parking spaces.
You're reading in which section now?
One-seventy-five-fifty, visual relief for lots. Total amount exceeds forty thousand square feet, which I believe this does. Smaller lots, the segments not more than twenty thousand square feet with dividers, at least ten feet wide containing vegetation.
And in, under the CBD district in section E, it says that reduce, the planning board may, as part of site plan review, reduce the landscape buffer strip required in section one-seventy-five-fifty to a minimum of five feet, and the buffer required to a minimum of ten feet, provided suitable landscapers provide in accordance of this bylaw.
Right. And so, what is the, being proposed here? Four feet?
Right now, yeah, it is, it is a four feet, so if we need a waiver to that, it will be done. What we're trying to do is initially, right now, it is an open expansive pavement. We're trying, and our previous edition did not have an aisle in there, I'm sorry, an island in there. So, we are trying to put the island in to get the plantings in the middle, along with the edges, and to also disguise the drainage system. This serves as both. So, when you park your car, you, although a lot of people are going to walk down the middle of the parking lot, like you do at Target or whatever, we're required to provide the sidewalks at the, let's say, the front bumper of the car, on both sides. And that's where, why you said there's eight feet of concrete, we're required to have four-foot-wide concrete.
Well, I, I, me answering that, is the island itself is twelve-foot wide, and we are addressing the board engineers' comments to add four-foot sidewalk on each side of it, which give us that.
So, when I'm driving in, there's going to be some sort of bumper there, so I don't pull up over the sidewalk?
Well, there's a curb, yeah.
Okay.
There's a, the sidewalk is a raised sidewalk, it's a curb. So, if you remember, our previous editions, we were trying to replicate what's out there now with angled parking spaces. We have since redone that to put in the twenty-five-foot aisles and to put in landscaping. By putting in the landscaping, we've lost some parking, but I think this is a good, you know, balance, thank you, of having the suitable amount of parking, plus guest spaces, plus landscaping.
So, are, and the bioretention strip in the middle, are there going to be trees along the entire length, or just in that front length closest to the building?
It's the entire length.
Yeah, that's just a.
So, there'll be nine, there'll be nine total trees?
Because of the gray of the parking lot, we separate the bioretention soil into three cells, we check them, so that way we can balance the runoff in each cell. The printing details, the printing thresholds, so we once, that was typical for our three cells.
All right.
We had discussed at one point with Dave and with the engineers about the ends of the islands, which are landscaped, we'll call them Ts, of removing the ends and painting it instead, so that it's easier for plowing. But in long term, we thought that landscaping is there eight, nine months of the year, the plows are going to have to work with it. So, we kept the additional landscaped area.
Sean, do you want to continue this until the June 4th meeting?
If, if the board feels appropriate, if it's possible, I would like to get some feedback that if the board is comfortable with the hundred and ten units as I described, with the, with the, let me go over my notes once again, ninety-seven one-bedroom units. If we can kind of get that guidance, we can ask the architect to continue getting more definitive and maybe answer some of your other questions about windows and such. So, if that's possible, that would let us kind of move forward a little bit more quickly and get more details in that regard. I know the planning board doesn't do a lot of architectural review, but I think here there's a lot of questions.
What is due of the board?
I would make a motion to accept the, as it's been laid out.
Yes, sir.
I'm fairly new to Abington. I know the number of units in four feet.
Will we have your name, please, and your address, please?
I'm sorry?
Will we have your name and your address, please?
Oh, it's Mike Lake, Twenty Wetherly Street, in Abington. And I'm just curious what the, what the rules are now for square feet in bioretention versus five hundred, five thirty.
The only thing that's in the bylaw is a board health regulation, and I believe a one unit must be six hundred and fifty square feet, and every unit after that has to be a minimum of four hundred and fifty. Don't quote me on that, but it's something in that area. So.
This thing is pretty small. Thank you, Mr..
Jeff, I don't know whether we need an actual vote on this, or whether we just need a.
But at first, no, first, I, when I first heard this thing, I felt completely different about it, but I'm behind it right now, as it is smaller, the smaller the units that you can view. The selection, just as it sees right now, I don't think it's fine. I like the direction it's going, that the whole idea is just to be.
So, would your direction be that, that you would be in favor of ninety-seven one-bedroom units?
If that's the way it's built out, yes.
It'll be a total of a hundred and ten with ninety-seven being one bedrooms.
Right.
Well, actually, I'm sorry, a hundred being one bedrooms, so it's ninety-seven for rent and three for the onsite employees. And if the board feels that way, I think we would come back and address the fire chief's concern about the radiuses and all, and the fire escape removal potentially, and we'd just kind of work on the other details that Dave was lacking.
And the appearance, to address Rick's concern.
Yeah, if we can get, if we know a hundred and ten.
There's going to be a hundred and ten units. You guys will be able to show us a drawing that has windows and stuff like that.
Yeah, I will do my best to have that ready.
Per building code, you have to have certain number of windows per unit, so you have to eye and know how many units.
So, you don't know how many units, you'd be able to say what the building code is or not.
Yeah, so you have to know how to, they are the units, and then you can punch in the windows after.
Oh, also follow up with the fire chief about the railroad street parking area and signage. And there's one option we might want to discuss, that if, again, we would like to keep those there, to have as much flexibility of onsite parking, but if it becomes an issue, I think the board, we can utilize the provision where it can be built initially as green space with, and the board can ask us to go back in there later, three years, five years from now, and add the parking if you think it's, would be more beneficial.
Let me throw something out as far as the parking.
Uh-oh.
Has anyone looked at the idea of a parking garage on the side as opposed to open?
Yes. And the cost is approx, I think it was about twenty-five thousand dollars per space.
Okay. I just had to ask.
And we had to ask too.
Just to be clear, respectfully, I won't support this project with this many units of this size.
Of the size of the apartment?
Both. Number of units and size. Well, number of units, if you can make the, keep the units the same and make them bigger, that'd be a great physical, you know, achievement, but you can't. So, I just, the density, especially considering what's around it, I don't think it's appropriate.
And what would be your suggestion?
Fewer units.
What would you be happy with?
Fewer units, mix, bigger mix of units.
But if you could give, give us some idea of what you would want. You would want fifty units and three, two bedrooms?
I think if you get it down to eighty-five units, it's.
The project is not fiscally possible with that. I mean, and I understand what your concern is, I, it's a blurry line, we're at site plan review, and we're talking about the interior design of the unit itself. And I understand what you're saying. We certainly will, we're, I believe we're taping this for the, for the owner, so she will know your comments and hear this comment. If there's something we can work with the architect, I'll report back to you.
Well, I guess, my comment is, if you make it less one bedroom and more two bedroom, the density is going to, the same, same number of people is going to be living there. To create a central business district, first you have to bring the people, the density, into the district, and then the business will come, you know, is part of the planning process.
Hopefully.
June 4th is your next day?
June 4th.
So, can I say something?
Yes, sir.
My name's very young. I'm the engineer, mechanical guy. I tried to help Lillian go over the mechanical system, or maybe give her some advice. The vision, I like this project is beside the code, beside the design, beside the unit, because I talked to her a couple times. She told me this, we have a kitchen there, the kitchen, beautiful size, and also we have art room there. The kitchen, that means we have a lot of public area in the first floor, then we just provide some kind of service, maybe feed, like a, like a, if you want to learn how to cook, then we have a cooking program to help the people, the family, or whatever, to cook, and also just benefit to the, to the community, to the city, to the town. And also, we have an art room there, and those art, art people, or whatever, they do the dancing, do the meditation, or maybe we can build a room fee, or whatever. For example, the other day I asked her, I have a friend, she's a little, little poor, and she live in a low-income housing, but she want to make living for the, for the single house, for the, for the single mother. Then she cook a little Chinese food, and it serve it to us, and the taste is beautiful. I, my wife is going to buy her, but she work in the, in the kitchen. Then I talk to Lillian, can she use the, your kitchen? By the time you finish, they said, yes, come on, tell her to come over here, I'm not going to charge her. So, that's maybe the thing, that you're, you're the board, think about that, maybe they can benefit to some of the people, some of the town, the community, and they do the art or whatever. So, this is my comment, before the guys make a decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, the rest of the board, how do they feel about the hundred and ten units, or something less? Well, I guess you haven't heard too much.
That's fine. I wanted to give you feedback.
I'm okay with the hundred and ten, but, you know, still look at, you know, take a look at it, you know, addressing Rick's concern. I mean, I understand where he's coming from.
Yep.
Just, just take a look at it and see if this could be reduced in a way that would make sense economically, but maybe address Rick's concern about as far as having all these units. I mean, you guys have to, I understand you have to make this have fiscally, has to make fiscal sense to you, I understand. But, you know, just try to look at what Rick was saying, and maybe see if you can reduce that.
So, we can have a motion to continue the hearing till June 4th at the request.
Motion.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Can we take a two-minute break?
Yes.
A little bit of recess.
I've got sixty seconds left.
Can we get back? So, on the, on the draft, there's Article 33, which was never advertised, it's a petition article, and it was never advertised, so the planning board can't act on it. This is different. There's two of them that have this. One was the public commercial, changing the name and the uses. This one is to change the uses in the multiple use.
Okay, when we get to.
Plan field just. And also, some of the M U P D D, some of that is a million point, so there's a whole separate notice and everything that has to be done, so it's probably can't be acted on. It is telling.
You have a part of town?
The Avington planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 7th, 2018, at 6:05 PM at the Town Hall, 500 Belichick Way, Avington, on application. July Assad, 7th Whisus Street, Wilmington, Mass. 01887, under the Avington zoning bylaw, section 175-77. The property address is 225 Brockton Avenue, Avington, Mass. 02351. Property is located on the Sessas map, 15 Lot 49. Plans can be viewed at the Town Clerk's office, Wayne P. Smith Chairman, advertising Brockton Enterprise 4.318 and 43018.
Okay, good evening. My name's John Carter, from, I work for the Russell Wheatley Company. I'm here representing Mr. Assad on his project here on Brockton Avenue. It's currently an existing, an existing gas station that's been, that's been closed. Basically, what Mr. Assad wants to do is reopen the building for the sale of gasoline and for the sale of propane. He had been to the building inspector, and the building inspector had directed him to come to the board for site plan approval to show, to show the use and what he's going to do with the building. So, basically, what we're here to do is, is just to show you that we are conforming with the bylaws for site plan review as far as parking is concerned. The plan, what we're doing with the plan is basically just stating on the plan that his, he is here for just a review, so that he can get a license to sell gasoline and to sell propane. There's a, we put a note right on the plan stating that. There is no proposed expansion of the, of the site as would be with regards to any additional pavement or impervious area that's going to go on the site. So, we had also put on the, on the plan, and I had spoken with David Johnson about, about this, that there would be no reason for doing any extensive drainage calculations, because we are not, we're not proposing any expansion of any, of any, of any impervious area. Dave had, I just got this, David given me a, his review letter. As far as the parking is concerned, his, he had, his, his suggestions are well-founded, and whatever he showed on, in his review as far as eliminating certain parking spots and adding one here and moving the dumpster, I don't have any issue with, with what he wants me to do. I think that what we would like to see, or hope to see, would be, hopefully, an approval subject to us taking care of whatever comments that David had on the, on his review. And I'd leave it to you if you have any questions, which we're more than happy to answer that.
We have a, a letter from the zoning enforcement officer. Plan showed seventeen proposed spaces for under a gas-filled canopy. How does the applicant sell gas and parking vehicles? And that was.
Typically, there are those that are going to be, they're used as parking spaces. They count as a parking space, because that's what they're going to do. They're going to park their car, get gas, and they're going to leave. There isn't anything else that's going to be, that they're going to be there for. There's not going to be a convenience store in here.
look at how the tank truck will pull in, how do they refill while someone's at the gas tank, or do they come at certain hours? But, and, and drainage seemed like it would be something that we'd be concerned about in that, all right now, we don't know whether the oils and the gases, do they run, run out into Route 18, are they caught by a, an oil separation before they head onto Route 18? The same thing around, is the concrete apron around the pumps, is that up to code today? Which, you know, is it, it's got all of the concrete drainage ribbons, I don't know what you're going to call it, but all around the area to catch the gas? Those are the things I was looking for.
The place only was closed for several months. So it's almost like it's a continuation of the business.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Bob.
It's been an existing gas station for as long as I can remember.
Yeah.
There's nothing being new proposed here.
Yeah.
I was kind of a little confused by what we're doing, site plan review, something that...
Yeah, because it just seemed like it just closed.
Existing, and I guess more of a comment would be, how come you're not going for the garage and the store? And, not, not that I care, but...
It was just this is...
It's an existing business.
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, he was, we were directed...
I guess I was confused.
We were directed by, he, Mr. Sad went to the, went to the building inspector. The building inspector directed him to come in front for, in front of the board for site plan review. So, I basically did, I basically here did an existing conditions plan.
That's a, that's a...
And that's because he has no intention of doing anything at this point in time other than the sale of gasoline and propane. He's not planning on putting a convenience store in there, or...
No.
Opening the bays up. If he is going to do something like that, he's going to have to come back in front of the board, or, you know, or would, or be directed by the building inspector.
I guess my comment was, I'm trying to express myself here, this, this is an existing business.
That's correct.
It hasn't been closed for very long.
No, it has not. I, I did the same thing, Bob, I, I went to the bill, I, I called the building inspector and I asked him what and why, and he said, because he wants to make sure that everything is in place and is approved, even though it's an existing, even though it's existing, he wants, basically, he wants this, he wants something enclosed, he wants closure on it, is what he wants.
He wants a plan with a parking...
I suppose.
I think it was, that's not my, my call, but it, I think is a little bit drastic making come to site plan review for existing buildings. It's been that way for, I, I don't venture to guess how many years.
Right, right. Previously, did they sell used vehicles from this site?
Yes, I have a car, right, so...
Are you going to be doing that again?
Of course.
Okay, so, but not right now, because there's no, I don't see any spaces for those vehicles on the site? Where would they be stored?
I gave Mr. Marshall a certified plot plan.
Okay, that's, that's not what he's asking for right now.
Yeah, right now, right now...
She will hold the parking for the used car.
That's why it's strange, when, when, that's why I looked at it, it's coming before planning review. Well, it's coming before planning review, we're looking at a station that's fueling tons of, thousands of gallons of gas, and it's an emerg, you know, it's an environmental nightmare, all by its lonesome, we know that. So that's why I thought that he's coming, looking for details of all the concrete, of all the... That's why I thought, otherwise, why would you...
I'm not changing anything, sir. All I need is to reopen the station, I need my license.
It's only closed, it's not abandoned, and that's why he's going to ask the question.
I'm not changing anything, everything stays the same.
But you're going to be selling used vehicles on the lot?
Yes, sir, I already have a license, my license is active.
How many cars?
Twenty.
Twenty cars?
Yes.
So, I, that's what I don't understand is...
If I may, Mr. Sad, at this point, you just want to open this place up to sell gas and propane, only.
But I, I have a...
You have a license, but, but what they're, but what we're here in front of the board is so that you can sell gas and propane.
Yeah, but I thought the used car license is not an issue. Because I already have a car license.
Well, I think everything is, I think everything is an issue here, sir. I think if, if you're going to get, if you're going to...
Why would it be an issue if I have a license to sell cars?
Well, I, I just, speaking for one, if, if I, if I'm made aware of the fact that it's going to be just strictly a gas station, I really haven't got a problem with that. But once you tell me you have a permit to sell 20 cars, then I don't see where you can park 20 cars.
I, I gave him a certified plot plan.
Well, I, I have a plot plan here, I have, the plan that's submitted here...
That's right.
...has nowhere near that, a mighty, many parking spaces, never mind running a gas station, and...
It's always been like this.
I, I don't, I, I, it's never been before, it's never been before me, and for me, on the planning board, to approve the plan, and I'm not even sure why it came before us, as, as Bob stated.
Might be able to lighten a little bit?
Yes, go ahead and lighten me.
160 P. Mallory Drive, member of the Conservation Commission. This property has a history of violating and encroaching the wetlands, there's a river that runs there, and they've been a part of us a few times. And they over, put too many cars in there. They'll get their used cars in there, and then they'll do a repair shop, and before you know it, there'll be 40 cars, they'll put them around back. I think that's where one of the issues might be.
So, at this point in time, you're just looking for the gas station and, and show us the parking for the...
Just looking for the gas, to sell gas and propane.
Yeah.
That's what the plan says.
Unfortunately...
If he, if, if Mr. Sad wants to sell cars on here, he'll have to come back, and, and at that point in time, I, you know, I hate to say this to him, but at that point in time, you'll have to, you'll have to expand the pavement, you'll have to do, then we'll have to do drainage calculations, and we'll have to show, we'll, we'll have to show everything in order to protect, A, the river, and, and B, anything else that, you know, we'd have to do our due diligence.
That was, that was part of my question, I understand it now.
So, on the plan, there's a number of monitoring wells? I know that every gas station has them. Is there, it seems like a lot, is there an existing problem or existing consent order or existing contamination issue or...
Not to my knowledge, there isn't.
Just want to make sure that just...
Yeah, not, not to my know, we just, we found them, we, we located them.
Okay. All right. Flag up for an hour.
I would make a motion that we accept this plan for the gas station and the sale of propane.
Subject to the comment letter of...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the approval, no sale of retail, there, there is no space in our decision to sell cars.
Yeah, just what we were presenting, for gas.
Correct, but I think it should be so known.
Just gas, yeah.
I just don't want to see 20 cars there tomorrow morning and have someone say the planning board approved this, so...
What we're doing is okay, the sale of gas and propane.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, you don't have enough parking for it, for selling cars right now.
I understand that, but, go ahead.
Actually, I leased the station from Mr. Sad as mechanic, and also, I know, I talked to the marshal, and he said, there's no way to have like 20 cars, you may have 12, 13 cars. I said, it doesn't matter, because I leased everything from him, the gas, the store, and the garage, and the license plate, or used cars. And I have good reputation, I know they messed up with a lot of people, I don't know them anyway, the people before, I'm new people. By the way, my name is Kostya Tuma, I live in 11 Cedar Street, Waymills. I'm doing my best to get my living. I have good reputation, I used to work at Quincy, at BC Oro, for six years, I was the manager there. I opened my own shop in Quincy, but very small, there's no space for me. It's like dress three cars outside, which, I'm not dentist, I'm mechanic, I need minimum like six, seven spaces to put cars. That's why I moved, and somebody referred Elise, I didn't know him before. So I came over, we did the deal, and I show up here, and I find out he has to do like site plan, so I wait. I lost my business because I was expecting to get that, and he prefers to start. Mrs. Les, she knows about it, because we've been like almost over two months now, or maybe three months, going back and forth, which I accepted, I cannot challenge the situation, this is, this is what it is. But now, just mentioned, like, I'm hearing, like, everything going on without me, so I'm waiting for what, like, I'm not, I accept it, even if you tell me 10 cars, 7 cars, 8 cars, doesn't matter. It's not about cars, about the quality, how much can I serve people with good quality? I don't need people to say anything bad about me, because I built my reputation for 10 years, I don't want to lose it.
But I, I don't want you to go in there as a tenant and to find out that there's 20 cars there all of a sudden, that you don't, they don't belong to you even, and someone's selling 20 cars off the same property you're on, and they close you down. I don't want that to happen.
No, what's going to happen, we're going to go for a town here and for a license transfer.
For a garage?
For the garage, not a used car.
But not used cars? Somehow or other, I'm not getting through the fact...
No, no, I hear you, but I read, why you revoked my license, why I have a...
I'm not revoking anything. You've come before the planning board, I don't particularly know why you're before the planning board to begin with, but you are before us for some reason. And you're asking us to approve this as the plan states. That's what you're before us, but at the same time, you're telling me that you're going to have 20 used cars there for sale. Is that correct?
I don't have any cars right at the moment, but...
You, you said that you're going to want to sell 20 cars there.
I thought it because the car license, I, I don't think it was an issue.
Well, it is an issue for me.
So, I'm going to suggest that we kick this back and not take it up at this time, and have them come back at the next meeting, either with this plan or with a plan that says 20 cars, space for 20 cars for used car lot. Because we're about to approve something that they don't want.
We have two, we have two issues here, Rick, that...
I went by his direction. And I have two issues. To be honest with you, the used car thing, the used car thing, no offense to Mr. Sad, he's a very nice man, but the, but the, but the fact that the used car license came up, to me, is, is taking me by surprise.
John, I don't think it was an issue because I already have a license.
I understand that, I understand that, but, but honestly, Mr. Sad, to do that, there are certain things you're going to have to do to this site. You can't, you can't park cars on, you can't park cars, used cars, on, on a gravel, on a gravel area, right next to...
I am not, I gave a certified plot plan to Mr. Marshall.
I understand that, but they don't...
Showed him exactly where all the parking for the used car.
I understand that, but on this plan, this is all you've got for impervious area. You have to, you have to, to do that, you have to show some way of protecting, you have to protect the wetlands.
With a certified plot plan.
I understand, but that's a different issue. You have to, you have to do...
Engineered plan's different than a certified plot plan.
Yeah.
Certified, just saying, someone's sorry.
That's right.
So, maybe we should move to continue?
I guess, I guess that would be the, I guess that would be...
One of the problems you have, you have a gentleman here that's trying to lease the property, and has put out of business because he thought he was going to get it and found out he couldn't, and it's going to make him wait another month, which I...
We made that motion, I'm only to second it.
I would, I would suggest that you take the approval that you have, or potentially going to get right now...
Yeah.
...and expand upon it, if you want to start selling gasoline and propane. Unfortunately, that's the way of...
Yes, Anne.
I, I would say I would stick with my motion and approve what's here, has nothing to do with used cars, gasoline and propane only, and no used cars.
And no used cars.
I'm mechanic, you know, this is...
I understand where you are, but, but the owner of the property says he's going to put 20 cars there.
No.
But that's additional things to garage.
He's going to be transferring the license to...
Exactly.
He wants to be able to fix cars here also.
That's what I'm trying to say, it's not up to him anymore, because he leased it already for me. I don't care, even if you give me, whatever you judge, whatever you mention, I promise, and you try me just once, and you know, I, you know, fulfill my word. Even if you tell me 6 cars, I respect that, because I'm not, I'm not superhuman, to do 20 cars and it's...
It won't fit on the property, that's...
Logically, it doesn't make sense for me, because I can do like 5, 6, 7 cars, whatever you give me.
No, but what we're saying for you, if I could interrupt, is that you've got, you've got the garage, and you have the, you're going to sell gas, and you have the propane, and you count, you said the number of spaces you need for your, for your repair business, and there are those number of spots here, but there's no extra spots for any, anything else. So it's gas, propane, and repair. So the cars there are there to be, they're customer cars, that's why, or they're getting propane.
They're not even asking for that, just asking to sell gas. That's what the plan was drawn up on.
Yeah, this is all, this is all...
But Bob, Bob, they already have, have a license to sell 20, 20 cars. And, and so...
When he goes in front of the selectmen and they look at this plan, he doesn't have the spaces.
Supposedly, they already have a permit to sell 20 cars, that's the thing that's sort of interesting.
There's got to be two.
Yeah, so they should not...
There has to be two plans. He couldn't have gotten a, he couldn't have gotten a class 2 or 3 license without showing.
The class 2 has been on, no.
There's been some issues here.
As long as he's had it.
So there's a conflict. Either, either he can't have a class 2 license, that would be revoked because he doesn't have the space.
Right.
He does this, or he does both, but with site plan review.
So, in other words, in, in our motion, it should be that the 20 car, used car sales permit needs to be revoked, can we do it that way?
No, I would say no, just because I think the steps you have to take to then get it back are not what we want to put before them. I mean, because I don't know if we're setting up another administrative bureaucratic hurdle for them to get over if we say we have to be revoked. I think they should go out in the hallway and figure out if they want us to approve gas and propane only, or just withdraw it for now and come back next month. Because right now, we're not doing anything regarding used cars, because that's not what we're being asked to discuss.
That's correct.
So I think they need to go figure out what they want to do in the hallway and come back and ask us.
I would take what you get, and expand upon it.
Sure, you don't show that it's working.
The garage inside.
I'm going to give you a...
Okay, thanks. We'd really like to see go, go forward, but there's been an issue with the tenants, and it's all coming to a head right now.
Well, not, not only that, but they've had problems with conservation and everybody else.
Now, now I see why.
I'm surprised they haven't pulled the license before.
I've never seen anything like this.
That's why it's been closed since October.
I don't see anything coming.
They haven't really been selling gas for a couple of years.
I just ask how long, like, before I do a test, or what's the...
I, I would suggest, it's to do with your subdivision?
Yeah.
I would suggest that you come back at the next, it's not on the agenda, I don't believe.
No.
So it will be held after we...
I just have a couple of questions.
No, I'm not going to, I'm not going to hear them, because we have so much to cover tonight, and it's not on the agenda. But if you wish to come back and be on the agenda in, in June, we'd be glad to have you. But I ha, we haven't got, this meeting is going to go to midnight, right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a site plan review, 228 Washington Street, which is a continuance, and I believe John's going to ask for a continuance on that. So, we'll go to the zoning article. I'll just, I'll announce this, we'll, we'll interrupt this as we, they come back in and... Town of Avington Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to GLC 40A5 on May 7th, 2018, at the Avington Town Hall, 500 Greenwich Way, Avington, Massachusetts, at 6:10 PM. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on the following, proposed amendments to the Town of Avington zoning bylaws and zoning map.
We have a site plan review, 228 Washington Street, which is a continuance, and I believe John's gonna ask for a continuance on that. So we'll go to the zoning article. I'll just, I'll announce this, we'll interrupt this as we, they come back in and. Town of Abington Planning Board will hold a public hearing pursuant to GLC 40A5 on May 7th, 2018 at the Abington Town Hall, 500 Greenwich Way, Abington, Massachusetts at 6:10 PM. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide interested parties with an opportunity to comment on the following. Proposed amendments to the Town of Abington zoning bylaws and zoning map. The first one is to amend section 175 dash 24.2 to extend the temporary moratorium on uses of land for non-medical recreational marijuana establishments to June 30th, 2019. And we do, and we do have other articles on this that will probably discuss before this meeting's over.
Yeah, I had a question to that one and that, and I think there's three altogether that talk about the, but we're proposing an overlay district and seems contradictory. I'm wondering why we're, I don't remember why we are looking to put a moratorium on it. I don't remember.
I was gonna ask, are we proposing the moratorium or are selectmen proposing it?
Selectmen proposed it.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, it says actually the article language says by the planning board. So I think we proposed a six-month one and that got changed to 12 months, is that correct?
You have two, actually. If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Pleasing.
So on, on April 2nd, number, number 13 was to, was the six-month moratorium.
Yeah.
And then I think that, I think that the chairman is correct. I, I think that this, May 7th, number one, I do think that was proposed by the selectmen.
That's what I thought.
So that should, we could, we could, that could be fixed in the, the warrant hasn't been published yet. So that could be fixed.
Now, my understanding is the board of selectmen basically wants town meeting to have choices. They don't want to prescribe a recommend, recommendation because frankly, they don't know how town meeting is going to vote. So they're going to basically, they're giving them three options. Regulate, which is what we've been talking about, which is assigning a zoning district for it up in the high tech and industrial, as well as the other language that goes with that. The other one is to prohibit, and that would be a ban that would then have to go to a special election. And the third option is a moratorium for another year while the state commission finishes its regulatory process because there's still a couple of significant issues it needs to issue regulations for, as well as seeing how the first round of permits shake out. How do towns cope with it? What do the agreement, host agreement look like? Are we seeing any impacts? That's why they're doing it that way. So they're putting a poo poo platter on the, on the warrant, basically, and letting people choose what they want.
That won't be confusing.
No, not at all. So basically, someone at some point at town meeting is going to have to bring one up and that's gonna be where all the fights happen around and you'll know after that first one where people are probably gonna end up. So it just, it's gonna be interesting.
And the concern I have, Amy, is, is if we, if, if we vote not to have marijuana in town and then we have the special election and they do elect it, do we have to have our rules and regulations in place at that time? So do we need at town meeting, do we have to have those regulations just in case? Cause, cause at that point, it's my understanding that if you have no regulations in place, that someone can just say, okay, I wanna, and they could build anywhere in town.
You are, you are correct. They could, they could, they could operate anywhere in town that retail is allowed, they can operate anywhere in town that testing is allowed, yes. But that is why we recommend a moratorium. So if, if the ban passes at town meeting and fails at the ballot, and if the moratorium passes at town meeting, you still have time to come up with regulating, regulating zoning bylaw. The, this article, this particular article, I have, I do have suggested language for it, which is that at the end where it says that, it says moratorium on uses of land for non-medical recreational marijuana establishments to June 30th, 2019. And then we have to add language that says, or until such time as the town votes to prohibit recreational marijuana establishments or adopts a zoning bylaw amendment approved by the attorney general that regulates recreational marijuana establishments, whichever occurs earlier. So that language is there for a couple of reasons. One is the situation where if there is a, the ban passes at town meeting but fails at the ballot. The other reason why this language is here is in case the overlay passes at town meeting and for some reason, the attorney general shoots it down. You still have this protection of a moratorium. And so that is why we are recommending the three, as Rick had explained, which he, he explained it as best that I could and it's, it's very confusing, but it's, we think, we think it's probably the best way to do it.
Any comments from the public?
I, I agree that we should, I mean, if, is a planning board gonna support its own article regarding regulating it wherever it goes? I mean, I assume we're going to, right?
I think so.
So, I mean, but I, I think we can support as a planning board, both the moratorium and the regulation of it for the reasons that Amy laid out, which is the moratorium is a safety net because we don't know how it's all gonna play out. So we at least have some time to react if things go kabuki.
Right.
But then we can still say, but it's the will of voters, we think it should be regulated for the, in this area.
So if we could have a motion to approve as Amy read a minute ago. Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Being no further discussion, we need to close the paper here any time is.
Um, no, we just need a recommendation on each one and that would be your vote. So I would just keep, yeah, you could keep moving, so.
On the motion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Now, John, if you.
Well, yeah. This gentleman here, he's a mechanic and that's how he makes his living. Our plans, as I was telling him, our plan specifically states that the, that we were in front of you so that we get a license for the sale of gasoline and propane. Didn't know if there was any way that we could word it that he would be allowed to work on cars in the garage under, under this, under this agreement. And as far as the used car license, we would, we would say they would just, just freeze it or have to come back. I explained to Mr. Saad what would have to happen as far as, he has a license for 20 cars here, but he has no place, he has, he hasn't, the site can't support his license. Although the license, as he was saying, he's bought, he, he bought the property, he already had, the license was already, already there, but he doesn't have the, the improvements to the site to hold, to, to be able to park those cars. I mean, you're too, you're right, you're right next to a, you're right next to a wetlands. You have to protect the wetlands for him to do that. So he would have to come back in front of the board if he was to decide that he wanted to go forward with his license, he would have to come back in front of the board and get site plan approval and he would have to do a notice of intent with the conservation commission and get an order of conditions in order to do that. And I told him it's, at this point in time, the way things are laid out, it's a very, it's a very big deal to do that, to do that expansion for his used car lot. But my heart's kinda going out to this gentleman because he's looking for, he's looking, he's looking to work and, and he needs, and he needs an approval for the garage to open up. Not so much the used, he's not, he's not concerned about the used car lot, he, he's concerned about being able to utilize the garage base.
Yes, Bob.
Unfortunately, I think that's, that's not what you presented, but.
No, it's not. It's not, and I don't know.
It could be up to Marshall to determine whether or not he has enough parking spaces to use the garage.
Right, right. And that's, that's kind of what I was, maybe that's the next, the next, that I guess would be the next, the next thing to do is either, either take the approval that we can get for the, for the gasoline and the propane use and then go to Marshall and see if, and see if he would be allowed to.
He's gonna have to present the plan to the selectmen for the garage license, for the garage license.
Well, he does that too.
They're gonna wanna see if he's got enough parking and that's up to Marshall.
Yeah, cause the, the selectmen are the, the authority to issue, issue the licenses, not the planning board.
I, I didn't, I did not know that.
And they're gonna wanna hear from the building inspector saying that he has enough parking for.
Personal opinion?
But that's not what you presented to us.
Right.
Well, cause it's just that one sentence, but couldn't we, we couldn't make a motion to add that to that sentence? There's one sentence here that says, note, the purpose of this plan is for licensing the property for sale of gasoline and propane.
I was very surprised the, the garage wasn't part of what we were getting. That's kinda why I asked the question again, because it's a garage, gas station, it's been a garage and gas station.
Unfortunately, it was a specific question that I asked too and it was, no, this is what they were doing. I mean, this is the first time I've met this gentleman tonight, by the way, so you know, that's, 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 that's kinda where we're at, kind of hat in hand here saying, is there a possibility that we can do something other than what's stated on the plan?
Unfortunately, I would, I would approve what you presented and I think you're gonna have to go talk to Marshall.
Yes, sir.
I talked to the marshal before we do the site plan. He said, I can't see any problem with the garage. But the problem just about selling cars, because he has 20 cars, that's too much. And this group of people. And I told him, this is not me, I don't know those people. And he said, I don't see any problem with gas, about store and also about the, but I don't know about the propane, it's from the fire department.
That's correct.
But about the garage, I don't see any problem. But about the license, when you get the property, you can apply, but you may not get the 20 cars license. And I said, no problem, whatever you tell me, I'll do that, I'll accept it. And I'm surprised now because the gas, I'm not gonna deal with the gas, I wanna hire someone because I'm not gas seller, I'm mechanic. I know my, my, you know, my, my, you know, what you call like, my space is the garage.
Your expertise. Skills.
Exactly, because I've been like 38 years mechanic, I cannot measure myself pumping gas because this is my job. I, I used to be manager for many years, even in my country, I owned my garage for 24 years, my own business. So, you know, now I'm stuck, you know, or I'm heading my, my head to the wall because I didn't expect that.
So, make a motion.
I, I feel bad for the situation. I was willing to approve what you presented and I think you're gonna have to go talk to Marshall. I would take what you can get. Again, I would take what you can get. So I would stick by my motion originally to approve the plan that we got for gasoline and propane. Motion made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, well, I just wonder why, I feel like I'm being naive to say, why can't we approve it as well for the garage? I don't know why we can't make a motion.
Cause they didn't come before.
Because that's not what's before us.
I didn't come before you with that.
It's just gas and propane.
Well, it's on the drawing, it says garage.
It also has the note here that says, it's for gasoline and propane. Just showed that to us.
Yeah, I know.
Could ask town council, she's sitting there, her opinion.
In my opinion, the legal ad didn't mention the garage license. I, I wouldn't.
Legal ad doesn't say anything.
No, but on the application board has that. I apply applications.
The legal ad doesn't say anything about what it is.
I would not go against town council, so take what you can get.
Yeah.
Well, it's.
It's on the application, what's in the application is.
I'm looking at the public hearing notice, I'm just talking about words, there's no words here of actually what this even is going to be. It just says, we're gonna hold a public hearing, five whatever, for the zoning board section such and such, for property, whatever, the property's located. It's like the zoning board thing.
On the plans, on the plans, it just says.
No, this is, but the plans aren't in the newspaper, this public hearing.
No, they aren't in the newspaper, but, but the plans are in the clerk's office and that's what they, that's what they say.
A notice refers people to where the plans can be found.
Marshall could, that's, Marshall could, John.
Huh?
Marshall could.
Yeah.
That's in his.
Yeah.
Yeah. The motion made and seconded, any further discussion? Further discussion? Listen, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Application.
No.
Yep.
This is mine, I did that.
No, I did that.
No, but I apply application.
You did one before the selectmen.
The motion, motion was made and seconded and it was voted unanimously, so it is a gas station and a propane station. What you do from there on, you're gonna have to talk with Marshall if you have to come back to the garage, okay? Nothing else I can do tonight.
Right.
All right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. It being six, let me just, 610, 607 actually, John.
Yeah.
You are this 228 Washington Street and you're gonna continue that.
Just gonna continue it.
Continue it to the June 4th meeting?
Yes.
So further request to continue the hearing on 228 Washington Street to June 4th. Can I have a motion? Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Sorry, gentlemen. Get this taken care of. Thank you very much.
The, to amend Article 5 use regulations by adding a new section prohibiting, ban non-medical recreational marijuana establishments in town and to amend section 175 dash 21 table of use regulations by prohibiting non-medical recreational marijuana establishments in all zones.
I have a question for either town council or the moderator.
Please.
Hypothetically, if we wanted to amend this to say, to prohibit only the retail sale but allow the commercial uses, growing, manufacturing, distributing, would that be allowed as a motion on the floor or would that be beyond the scope?
You'd have to have it, you'd have to have something there somewhere, otherwise if it's, if you haven't got an article on it, you just can't add to it or subtract from unless it's in.
Well, right now, it's all medical marijuana establishments, but underneath that umbrella is a bunch of different types of uses. So that's why I'm, I'm wondering, that's my question, is, is it beyond the scope and you would have to have a separate one or could you amend this one?
You're reducing the scope, I mean, really.
Yeah. So I'm just looking at this for the first time, I'm sorry. So I'm sorry, would your question to eliminate something out of this list?
So it's, it's consistent with GL that the text below it explains the different types of medical marijuana establishments.
Cultivators, testing facilities, product manufacturers and retailers, all other types of licensed marijuana related businesses shall be prohibited.
Right.
If you were to make a motion to delete, let's say cultivators from this text, I think it's within the scope because you're not expanding what's being prohibited.
Okay.
So townspeople would have to vote whether to accept that amendment. Does town council have any reason to disagree with that?
I, I don't. I, I would agree that it's reducing, I would, I would note that if that is, if that is being contemplated, then the, the chart above also has to be revised, also has to be amended. So instead of, it would have to say something like, if you're only going to remove one, one thing, you know, it'd have to say something like non-medical marijuana establishments other than whatever you want to keep in there, other than marijuana cultivators or something like that.
Yeah.
And by doing that, if you did that, so there's a lot of steps that would follow. So if you did that, then it appeared, it would appear that cultivators could go any, and I'm just using cultivators as an example, that cultivators could go anywhere because they are not regulated, they are not banned. If you wanna put them in only a certain district, I would recommend adding a line to 21, to 21E, you know, adding a line and where we say right here in the next sequential order to read, and I would just add another line as to where you wanna put those. I did, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may.
Please.
I do have an, I do have a change to this article also, which just, there's no, it's not a substantive change at all, it's a, it's a procedural change that we've kind of, I've kind of learned at other town meetings that we've done on this, on this article is that what it should say is, it should say, to see if the Town of Abington will vote to amend the zoning bylaw by adding a new section 175 dash 24 point, I think it's gonna be three, marijuana establishments to, to the table of contents under Article 5 and by adding a new section 24.3, and then you have the language that's below that says consistent with, that would go there and then we say, and to further add to section 175, 21E table of use regulations, and then we. and then we add the zoning, the table after the language. And that way, this language down here becomes a section in the zoning bylaw and does not get lost as part of the article. So...
Can I offer, Sir Riley's suggesting, for the microphone? This year's town meeting is gonna be in the new school auditorium. We are going to be using the drop-down screen and the projector as much as we can, meaning, some articles, there's enough space to print the text of the article. Some articles are too long to print the entire article. If there's such an amendment like this being proposed, I think for the proponents, it would be very helpful if you had that in advance, so we could actually project the amendment up there. And then people, I think, might help them understand what we're doing.
This actually, the, the changes that they're making tonight wouldn't actually be an amendment, because the warrant hasn't been published yet.
Right. And if there's a, but if there is...
But if there isn't, if there is gonna be an amendment after the warrant is published, I would agree.
Right.
But these are, the, the changes that have been made so far are procedural and have been voted on by the planning board.
I'm sorry, you're right. So, this is a planning board article, so you guys can change it before we publish it, right?
It says by the Board of Selectmen at the bottom.
It says, I'm sorry.
This one says by the Board of Selectmen at the bottom.
And all it's doing is moving a paragraph above the chart. We can leave it.
Let me ask you a question, just for all these articles. If the, if it's a Board of Selectmen article that they presented, part of the, because it's a zoning article, the planning board has to make their recommendation at town meeting. Obviously, you could recommend it as presented and written by the selectmen, or they could make a recommendation to amend the article as follows, right?
They could. In this instance, I would not, I wouldn't bother, because it's, it's too much.
Yeah.
To move everything around.
You're gonna print it the right, the way that you want it to be?
Right.
Right, okay.
Right. So, yeah, so I...
With the Board of Selectmen's consent?
Yeah, exactly. So, we would have to, we would have to have them, they would have to vote on it before town meeting. And since it's merely procedural, I wouldn't see an issue, but, but yeah. But if it gets printed the way that it is, it is fine.
Right.
It's just, just makes sense a little bit differently.
If it's an article the selectmen have presented, and they want it that, their way, but the planning board has a recommendation to amend it, then that's a motion.
Yes.
And we'd like to have that, different language, ready to publish.
Do you want to change something?
So, because this is, because this is a Board of, a Board of Selectmen article, Attorney Riley's right. I think that we should leave it. I think that the safest, cleanest thing to do is, would be to leave it as written. And then, we, we just need to remember to get this language, to make sure it's its own section, which it is. It's just...
All right. Need a motion on that?
My recommendation, so just to explain my thinking, my personal belief, not reflecting the board's thinking at all, my personal belief is that I think it's very short-sighted to ban everything, including cultivation, manufacturing, distribution outright, if people particularly have concerns about the retail sales as well. I think you're tossing baby out with the bathwater, because you'd still get 3% of the gross sales from the distributors and the manufacturers. And it's a commercial property that we can give commercial property taxes on. That being said, I'm not suggesting we do anything on board about that. My suggestion, or my motion for this will be to not take a position on the prohibition, because we're already offering the regulation piece of it and the moratorium as well.
So, it'd be like the planning board defers to the Board of Selectmen on this, rather than us making a decision?
Correct. Because I don't think we should have, on the same warrant, support an article to both prohibit it and regulate it. So, I mean, maybe I'm just not explaining myself right.
I don't know. I can see where that would be confusing the people.
Yeah.
I, I, I understand where you're coming from, and I, I think, if, if that's the case, and the planning board said, "We want to prohibit it," but obviously, from listening to you, Rick, you would like to have growers here, so...
At a minimum.
That would put, that would not allow them to be here, so you, you could say that if, if you, if the prohibit, prohibition stops, is, then...
I thought that what you're saying was that there are two things. We have the retail side, and then you have the, the non-retail side.
There is.
Yeah, and that's the side that we could, you could separate.
So, I mean, you want to prohibit the sale, but, but you don't want to prohibit the...
I'm not saying I do. I'm saying there might be people in the town who say, "We don't want the retail sales, but would be okay if the other commercial pieces are in town, in a warehouse up in, off 58 somewhere."
It's like what Bridgewater did.
Exactly.
Where Bridgewater banned the retail sale of it, but they allow the growing of it, so...
So, for this specific article, I don't think we should take any action. But I am probably going to prepare, just in case the conversation at town meeting floor drifts in that direction, language that'll, would allow us to consider that, if that kind of, we figure out that might be where people are heading towards.
It could be allowed.
The thing that always concerns me is the fact that, I, I know you can delete things, but it gets very difficult to add things that aren't in the warrant. In other words, if, if it's in here, you can, you can delete it, but you can't add it. And that's where it concerns me, Rick. And I, I, that's why I think it should be in here, in, somewhere, and that we allow the growing of marijuana in Abington, if that's what someone wishes to do, and, and the town wants to do it, otherwise...
All right, well, okay, I'll, you know, I'm gonna build on what Rick has said. So, I want to amend this article, what the attorney was saying, as far as the language to, you know, maybe prohibit the retail sale of marijuana, but allow the growing, the cultivation of it for commercial purposes, rather, you know, and I think we should, we need to state that tonight as part of this thing, 'cause, you know, what you're saying, Chair, you know, it's, it's easier to do this now.
So, you don't want to sell it, but you want to grow it for somebody else to sell?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because there, there are people in this town who would feel differently about having a sale, a retail store where people can go in and buy it, versus an innocuous building that nobody goes into and nobody knows that.
It's sort of like in Good Health in Brockton, where they, they grow it. They don't sell it. It's the one that was just...
They grow it for sale, so...
Yeah.
If I could ask a question about that, because 20% of the sales of any alcohol that you don't consume on, on the, built, you know, businesses that don't consume the alcohol, like Trukies, or liquor stores, or whatever, it works out somewhat that we're, you can only allow two of these, any marijuana businesses in town at all, from, from that. Actually, we're really looking, we're not looking at a, a battle out here with McDonald's and Burger King yet, but right now, we're only allowing two, two in here. But I do think exactly, we, we definitely should fall, divide that further into wholesale and retail, wholesale, realtor.
So, so unfortunately, the, the 20% is only for retail sales?
Yeah, it's not for the wholesale.
There's no limit on cultivation, testing laboratories?
Okay, that's, okay. Then further?
Can I ask a, procedurally, town council, this is a selectman's article, and you're gonna update it for the, the section numbers and all, but the selectman's article is a ban across the board.
Correct.
So, as I understand it, procedurally, on the, in order to enact the zoning bylaw, the planning board has to make a recommendation on this article, whether it's to prove it as written, to deny it, or to approve it with the following amendment.
I think that's, I think that's the route that I'm going with this.
And so, that's where I think you guys have to go into one of those holes, and if you are gonna propose an amendment, then we need to have that written out.
I guess that, that's the question, is, can we make a recommendation, or the official recommendation be an amendment to the article?
Yes, and if that amendment fails, then we would take a vote on the original article as presented.
That's what I got.
I, I, you, I'm not so sure, the, the planning board is required to make a recommendation, so to say, "We defer," I don't know if that's a recommendation.
I think your, your recommendation would be to, to not support this, because the planning board feels that cultivation should be allowed, or something like that. And then, you could present an amendment, I guess, if that's how you wanted to go about doing it. But that would, that would all be part of your recommendation.
So, that could be done.
So, I, I feel like there was something, there's two different things to said here, that I feel like you said that we make a recommendation, but we don't have the language for a superseding amendment, but Sean seems to make me feel like that our recommendation is a superseding amendment that would be taken up first.
Depends on, sorry. You could make a recommendation not to support this article completely.
Because of the following reasons, hypothetically.
Yeah, you, you are okay with retail and cultivation and everything. The planning board believes that this should be allowed in the town. The selectmen have an article that says they should be banned from the town completely. So, your rec, usually, we ask for the planning board for the first motion, but with all zoning, you go to the planning board for the recommendation. So, you're gonna have the first motion, which hypothetically, if the board were to vote, would be to pass over this article, if you just want to deny it. And there'd be a vote, and the town may pass over it, or they may not agree with your proposal. So, then we'd have to take a motion to approve the article, so, because we need a two-thirds vote at some point, well, to enact a zoning change.
You need two-thirds on this.
But if we ask a motion, a motion to pass over, might that only be 50%? These are the things that...
Yes, yes, because you're, you're not making a zoning change.
Right.
So, I guess my recommendation, and I'm certainly not heard of the board, doesn't go along with this.
There is one other, I just, just, there's one other thing, because we're, going along the lines with the, Sean, is, you can also vote to just not recommend it, and it still will go forward, it still will go to town meeting floor.
Right.
So, there's kind of three things. You recommend, pass over, or you vote to not recommend it, and then subsequently, you tell, your reason why is an amendment.
So, let me get, if I may, if I may get the sense of the board, how they would feel about essentially offering a superseding amendment that strips out the commercial wholesale side of it, and it just leaves the retail ban. And that would be the first thing that would be taken up on this article?
I'm, I'm following that, yeah.
Okay. I mean, you still need two-third, you would need two, no, you'd need 50, 50 plus one to adopt.
Would you take a motion on your amendment?
You need 50 plus one.
Actually, no, I'm sorry. What you would be proposing is, is a motion. You're gonna be the primary motion now, and it would be to approve this article with the following amended language. That needs a two-thirds vote to be approved, because it's a zoning change.
Okay.
Would you agree with that, or do you need to amend the article amendment?
You have to amend, you have to, don't you have to vote to amend the article? You have to vote to amend it.
Typically, if, like, if...
But they're not, because they're not the proponents, remember? The Board of Selectmen are the proponents.
They'll speak first and could make that motion. So, that's the first motion on the table. The warrant's not a, the article's not a motion.
But if the motion is to replace the language, then does it become 50 plus one, and then you have to take the enacting vote, essentially?
For example, if this said, an article to buy two police cars, and they get up and said, "I'd like to make a motion to buy three police cars," that's the motion, if you want to buy three or two. So, if you get up and say, "We'd like to..."
I didn't think you could do that, Sean. I didn't, I thought you can go from three to two, but you could go from two to three.
Example, all right, three to two, and say that, opposite. So, you're gonna make the, you know, a lot of times, the finance committee comes up and makes a motion to approve it with the following amended language. That's what's on the floor. Now, a lot of those are just regular majority votes. This is a two-thirds threshold we need to get to the end. So, I would agree with you, if, if the selectmen got up and made a motion to approve the article presented, and then you raised hand and said, "We'd like to make an amendment," then I would take the amendment first. You need a 50% threshold to approve the amendment or not. If the amendment is approved, then we say, "Okay, here's the article you're gonna vote on. The article as amended, I need a two-thirds vote to enact it as a zoning bylaw." The first motion is, "Approve this article as amended," I'm gonna say, if we don't get a two-thirds vote, then we're gonna go to the article as written, to see if that will give a two-thirds.
So, the amendment would be for, for cultivation only, and not for retail sale?
It would be for marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing establishments, marijuana product manufacturers, and any other type of licensed marijuana businesses, excluding marijuana retailers. So, that would include potentially delivery, if that gets approved by the state, and...
So, it's...
It would approve, it would allow delivery.
Yeah.
So, because it's a Board of Selectmen article, I think that the motion is the Board of Selectmen's motion. And so, what I might recommend is that your recommendation, the planning board recommendation state that the planning board, if, if you want to go this way, that the planning board does not recommend path, the passage of Article 16, if it stays Article 16. However, the planning board intends to propose an amendment on town meeting floor to allow for exactly what you just said.
Okay.
Right, so then we get the selectmen, make the motion as presented. I think that is cleaner and easier for them to follow. I agree with that?
Yeah.
So, so your recommend, so, so, okay, so if, if I could just say, if I could just have that again, it would be to include marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product manufacturers, and any other type of licensed marijuana-related businesses excluding...
Marijuana retailers.
Excluding marijuana retailers. Okay.
Shall be prohibited?
Shall be allowed. And then, what are you going to do about, are you allowing it in every district, or are you going to allow it only in certain districts?
Allowed only in HC and, no, I'm sorry, I and TB, depending on the outcome of the other ones. Because we pretty much determined we can't do it in the Muppet District that's up there, that's owned by Southfield. We can't impose another, can we impose a overlay on Southfield?
We haven't, Amy explained this earlier, that we, we need, that's with, anything to do with that district, it's a separate process for the, for the base.
I don't mean to cloud this, but this motion by the selectmen is to prohibit everything. Are you, are you not, is your end run, end game to say, to change us to just say, "We prohibit retail sales," period, right?
It's probably the best.
We kind of still need that vote. And...
It would still have to go to a special election.
Yes, to prohibit retail sales. But what I'm saying is, if you, could you take this article, as will be finally written, and just cross out where it says, "To include," cross out marijuana cultivators, marijuana testing facilities, marijuana product? So, it only says, "To include marijuana retailers," should, they said, "Marijuana retailers shall be prohibited with the Town of Abington," period. That's what this vote is, subject to a town election.
Yeah.
If that passes, you have not prohibited manufacturers, testing, cultivators.
Well, we need to tell the public when we do that, that this is what we're gonna have a subsequent motion for.
And I'm, my thought is, so that your, you would now, you would still need a use chart to say where all those other ones are allowed.
Yeah.
So, I just, you were just talking about putting an article in to allow certain things. I think you want to just try to...
You're right.
Shorten the list of what's prohibited, to only say, "Retail's prohibited," if I'm correct, subject to a vote.
Perhaps I can work with you next week or so into our town council.
Yeah, we have a lot of work to do.
All right.
I'm not trying, I don't, I'm not taking a position on any of these marijuana things, but I'm just, I'm more concerned with the procedure.
So, on the motion for this, this article, does someone want to make one? Recommendation for the planning board?
Recommendation is, planning board votes to not recommend Article blank. How did you put it, Amy? And that will...
The planning board intends to, intends to make an amendment on town meeting floor prohibiting only marijuana retailers, and allowing...
Cultivators, testing facilities.
In, in the industrial and the TB district.
Correct.
Can I second that? Are we all set with that? Is that, someone wants to second that?
Seconded.
Any, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry.
There is an article on the warrant about changing the TB...
Yes.
Business.
Yeah, we got a problem with that, too.
Yeah, I'm just saying, we have to, like, um, is that the order of these?
Yeah, it does. And so, as far as I know, that one's after this, so we're okay.
Theoretically, if you just, if the town did follow your guide and voted to allow cultivation in the industrial and TB district, and then half an hour later, we changed the TB district of business, would we just go back to the article, or?
No, the, technically, the use chart will, will change. So, the use won't, because it's a subsequent article. It's back in the 30s, and we're in the 15, 16, so...
Thank you.
Because that, that affects not just this article, it affects other ones, too.
So just to be clear, if we say TB district, and the town votes to change the TB district to the new thing, that this thing will go into the, the new district?
Still the exact same area.
Okay, right, right. Just, well, that's what we're gonna have to explain. It's the same area, it's just a different name.
Okay. To amend Section 175-39, multiple use planning development district subsection 1, dimensional requirements by decreasing a building setback to, from an existing lot line or existing street line from 200 feet to 50 feet, and decreasing a building setback from any other proposed parking area from 25 feet to 10 feet.
No, three.
Did I put, now put number three in?
No, it's, it is, it's, um, it's, it's after five.
We're out of order.
Okay, all right.
My petition.
I'm putting a new hat on right now, I'm a, I'm a petitioner.
No.
I'm not the moderator.
A lot of hats tonight, Sean.
And I'm only doing this because I understand the zoning bylaw. This is for the Muppet District only. Muppet District is basically the northern side of Chestnut Street, and there's also a small section on the far northeastern side of Adams Street, so the northern part of town. Currently, you're required to have 200-foot wide lots and a minimum acreage of, I think it's 10 acres. And it says that all, 200-foot wide lot minimum. It says that your buildings, however, have to be 200 feet away from the lot lines, which inherently, depending on the shape of the lot, creates a problem, because if you're 200 feet away from the, let's call it the left line and the, and the right line, you're shrinking your buildable area. And if you visualize, if we did that 200-foot setback, side yard setback on each lot down the street, you have 400 feet of distance between them. And again, this is just on Chestnut Street. We're proposing that, especially on this area of Chestnut Street in the Muppet District, many of you may know, there's, there's a pond, there's ledge, and there's wetland, so that, again, limits where you can build. So proposing that the setback be 50 feet from the lot lines, which would, again, create a 100-foot buffer between buildings joining lots, 50 plus 50. The building currently says that you have to have your parking, parking area 25 feet away from the building, which doesn't make a lot of sense, so we wanted to make it 10 feet, so the parking is close to the building, and you have your typical landscaping along the building, instead of avoiding 25-foot walkways, especially in the middle of winter. And the same thing with the parking areas, just the minimum is to keep them 50 feet away from a lot line. It just, we want to encourage commercial development up in that area, but the current setbacks are exceedingly restrictive, so we thought this is kind of better, but still regulated. We would hope that you would support this. It just, this came up with a proposal that was pending now, and we did get variances for this.
Well, it makes sense in, well, from one standpoint, which is not written in here, just to encourage all the parking to happen behind the buildings off the street. So one thing about allowing the building to come forward, you're limited to at least only one line of parking. And so I, no, I, I think this is fine, as it is, as you're talking about reducing it from 200 to 50, and from 25 to 10. I always think, you know, you could, you could all these endless places look like, we're not gonna get a target up there, but, not yet.
No, you're not. And, sorry.
Okay, what's your motion on this?
Well, I'd make the motion to recommend, yes.
That's the words.
Who was written?
Is it seconded?
Second. Second.
Second.
What's the motion on the floor?
This is on article, it's 175-39, multiple use plan development, and it's on, show it to him.
What's the, he's, I'm sorry, what was the ration? I apologize for stopping.
It's the 200 feet to 50 feet, and the 25 foot to 10 feet, and the 40 foot stays the same. And then parking areas from 100 feet minimum to 50 feet from an existing lot line or existing street line, mainly because it's exceedingly restrictive, as we did work on that to some degree up on Chestnut Street.
And just comparatively speaking, with all of the other zoning districts, the maximum side yard setback is 25 feet. We're, we're proposing this, this district will be 50 feet, so this is double what any other district already required, so it's, it's not, we're not throwing away the bylaw.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
No.
Bob, would you say?
Aye.
Okay, on four, to amend Section 175-29, dimensional and density regulations, Table 175, attachment two, to increase the minimum lot width and minimum continuous lot frontage in the highway commercial zone 8C from 100 feet to 125 feet. Seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To amend Section 175-21, table of use regulations, H2, to add the word registered before transport vehicles and trailers, and H3, to add the word registered before trucks and trailers used for temporary storage.
Uh, where did this come from?
Planning board.
I don't remember talking about this beforehand. When did we?
We talked about it in February or March in conjunction with something Mr. Riley said.
Did I miss it?
No.
What was the other part of that? It was principal prohibited. It was in context with the prohibited uses.
I'm not saying no support, I just am saying I don't remember saying we wanted to support a bylaw, but...
If I recall, it was granted by the planning board because there was, the current bylaw doesn't permit registered vehicles. And there was a question about, I think deleting the word prohibited out of the same area, but we came to find out that it already had been deleted.
So if I, if I may, there is a, there currently is somewhat of a conflicting provision in the bylaw that does not allow unregistered, unregistered storage of vehicles and transportation, transportation machines or vehicles in a side setback. And so by adding registered, this would, it just clarifies that.
What is, if these things aren't registered, they can't be moved conceivably, but if they are registered, they could be moved and stuff like that, so I think it's better it adds something to, rather than just get stuck with junky old trailers sitting on the lot. I'd make a motion to approve this.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say yes. Or say aye.
Aye.
All those?
I have already said yes.
Six, to amend the zoning bylaws by deleting Article 9 signs and replacing it with a new Article 9 signs. I have a number, I have a number of problems with it, and I'm sure...
No, it has changed since our last conversation.
Right.
Just wanna make sure.
Okay. I know it's changed to some degree. There, there are a number of things that, that bother me. And it's interesting to note that some of them were in our old bylaws that no one enforced, such as internally lit signs, which if you drive anywhere around town at night and see how many we have, it's, I would say over 50% of the, of the businesses in town presently have them. And I don't really see the problem with them as compared what, they need to replace those all with at, at some point, is externally lit signs from light bulbs of some sort that are directed on the sign, which, as I know I pointed out at one other meeting, that if you drove along 18 on the way to the planning board meeting one evening, the, the ones that were internally lit were very visible, and you could see what they were. The ones, in fact, it was at the doctor's office on the corner of Shore Avenue, it was impossible to read the sign. Now, I might be going blind, but I, you know, that's, I have a real problem with it. I mean, they are literally all over town, and I, and I don't see what the problem with it is. That's number one.
I agree.
We talked, we talked about that night, but I noticed anything that wasn't, didn't wanna be heard, didn't get commented on, and just left empty here after we spoke.
Right, well, I, we, I went back before the, the committee and, and met with them, and they did change a number of things. No, I, I have a question here, because this is...
And maybe Sean could refresh my memory as well, because he sat in on a couple of those last meetings. We said we allowed them for roadside signs, to be internally lit, and we, I thought we allowed them for facade signs.
I was just looking at while we were talking.
The only way they allowed them was, was for internally lit signs at entrance and exits.
Nope, we hadn't had this discussion, and...
Well, there's, if you look on page three of this sign by law, and I don't know if this helps answer your question, under, right in the middle of the page, illumination A, the fourth bullet, basically that, that section says, internally illuminated signs are not permitted, with the exception that the following are permitted. And the fourth bullet says, wall signs on buildings which are more than 100 feet from a street or driveway which provides access. So you would be allowing internally illuminated signs on a business that was at least 100 feet off the street.
Yeah.
You know, to be on the building.
Yeah, this, this is not the discussion I remember. I don't think it's reflected in here. Perhaps, I don't know if Amy remembers the conversation as well.
I, I think that was before I got involved with the, because I don't remember it at all, I'm sorry.
And I, I missed one of the meetings, so I don't know all the details of the history.
No, there were, there were a lot of edits made. I think there was something excluded, because according to this, you couldn't have an illuminated roadside sign, which nobody had a problem with. So I, I think there was some language...
I certainly had a problem when I met with the committee.
I know.
Yeah.
And we took that into consideration.
Right.
To the point where we changed our position.
But I...
What I'm saying is that the language is just missing. I think there was a couple of rewrites, and I think it was taken out during one of the rewrites. I'm gonna go back and find out, because we had a very long conversation about this.
Can it be put back in?
I don't see why not, but...
We have to, please? I said, oh, we, would we have to make the motion to put it back in, on town meeting?
I don't know what the language is, huh? Would you delete the prohibition somewhere else?
Rick, what, what section is it?
A, it's under illumination. Illumination.
It's really not numbered. It's fairly neither for...
General regulations in the state.
It's three, general regulations.
Because according to this, you can't have them on the road sides or on the facades, as, as it's worded right now.
Unless the building's 100 feet or more up.
Right, which doesn't apply to many.
The way this thing reads, it, it's strictly for directional. It's not for marketing.
That's why I'm saying is, I think that there was some language accidentally struck out, and that's why I, I don't have my old language with me. I don't know if town council does, but I would like to find out prior to town meeting, because I don't believe that was the intention of the committee, particularly the roadside. That, that horse has left the barn way long ago.
Wasn't there some discussion about downtown North Avenue, you know, trying to have, not have interior illuminated there?
Sign hanging off the building.
The only thing you have interior is the opening close sign.
Yeah, as it is now. So when you say roadside signs, you're talking about a posted sign, right?
Yes, that is not allowed right now under this.
Correct.
And it was being proposed straight here.
Same thing you're on, you're right, that's what I see.
And that, that was never discussed as an issue. So I, I just think that there's been a deletion of the language accidentally.
So it, it changed sometime between, it looks like it changed sometime, sometime between January...
Yeah, that would be about when.
And the final version. Because the version that I have, 126-18, is, has, under illumination is different, and I have no comments on it. And then the final version that we went over in April has this.
So would the resolution be to add a fifth bullet? It could be something as simple as a freestanding sign erected pursuant to the bylaw? There are other sections that says a freestanding sign can't be more than 30 square feet and da-da-da-da.
Sort of talks about it, but...
Yeah, I, I, I'm gonna have to go back to the board and, and ask. But I don't think, I don't think this is accurate. That, the major rewrite we did, I, I think it got accidentally struck, as we're rearranging things.
Yeah, because that would contradict location of signs.
Yeah.
So if we're gonna make a recommendation on this, replacing with a new bylaw signs, how would we word this? Planning board has the following recommendations, that the following changes be made to this, or, that's what we're gonna have to do.
Yes, and you could either, let's say if you have five proposed amendments, you could have five separate motions, or if you thought they were rather routine, you could make one motion with five amendments included, unless someone has to separate.
Just, just to move this along, I'm just trying to figure out what we should do with this. Seems to be, to move this along, that sounds like what we should recommend, is to approve this with the following amendments.
What is it, what is the opinion of the board?
Part of the other amendments.
Yeah. Part of the other amendments.
Go through your review and then make the decision.
So does someone wanna make amendment on, on interior lit signs? What was your suggestion? Please, what was your suggestion? That they be allowed.
That freestanding...
Freestanding, interior, uh, fifth... Interior illuminated signs.
And facade signs.
For marketing, yeah.
And facade, which right now it says, basically, wall sign and facade sign, I believe, are the same in the wording you're using. Right now, it says they have only if the building's 100 feet back.
Right, so for Health Express, 118...
Right.
It's less than 100 feet, but it has facade signs.
So all those signs theoretically would come down.
No.
No.
No, they'd be grandfathered in.
Yeah, and that's, that's just another thing, and I, I really need to ask town council about this. I, I can't imagine, and there must be a reason for it, but somewhere in the, it says this, where is it? Somewhere in, in the bylaw, I, it'd take me a while to find it, but basically it says that anything that was done in the past is, is okay, and anything forward has to follow. So in other words, if someone's been given, it, it basically says everything's grandfathered. And so if people put up signs, the way I read it, if people had signs up and no one ever did anything about it, even though they weren't legal signs, they're accepted under this, the way this thing is worded.
Mm-hmm.
I would think that this is a new sign bylaw, but not to give them exemption for everything they've done in the past.
The way it was worded is that anything that was legally put up is grandfathered.
I think, turn the page to page four, right in the middle, under C1.
Yes. Page four, what?
C1 says, non-conforming signs which existed prior to the adoption of this bylaw...
I don't think I'm on the right page. Page four, what?
C1 says, nonconforming signs which existed prior to the adoption of this bylaw.
I don't think I'm on the right page.
Page four.
Page four, Wayne. I have page four.
Under C, exempted signs?
That's page four.
Do you have?
I don't know what I've got. I've got, so, mostly the most recent.
I know Town Council's there for this discussion.
Yeah, this, this is, this should be legally nonconforming signs which existed prior to the adoption of this bylaw.
Yeah, I thought we talked legally too.
And by nonconforming, it means that it's legally nonconforming. So, it's, if there's a sign that is in violation of prior bylaw, it would most likely also be in violation of this bylaw.
This is better than what was, somewhere I have it. It's not in there like this. This is much better.
This is what I think, I picked this up from the table. This is what was on the table. This is a prior version, it looks like.
So, this is...
Let's give Wayne the better version.
So, that was added in the...
Right, that was one of the things that I mentioned at that meeting, and evidently they've...
Because that was expressed by a number of businesses, there was a fear that they were going to have to rip down their existing signs and spend thousands of dollars for a new sign.
Yeah, the way I read it, it was...
So, there are signs that are, there are current signs that were erected prior to any sign.
Right.
Regulation.
Right.
Those are legally nonconforming signs.
And any sign that exists now that has a legal permit, is put up according to the current bylaw, is legal now, and will continue to be legal, unless they took it down to replace it for some reason, now they have to conform to the current, this new bylaw of this basis?
Correct.
So, you re-listened, Wayne?
Please?
We listened.
Thank you.
The, just for background again, the general approach to this bylaw was to clean it up, to reduce some of the excess, those in the existing bylaw, to spell out some of the concerns, or at least give the enforcement officer the power to enforce certain standards such as penance and wacky wavy guys and other nuisances that had popped up that people had expressed concern about.
And you recall that the original, if we'd been doing enforcement all along, a lot of these things that exist was the main problem. And in fact, they still exist, even though we've added more personnel, we're still letting signs stay up that aren't supposed to be up.
We're also seeing an increase in neon lights or LED lights that are, you know, signs that are, go beyond just open and closed, that goes to, you know, nails, hair, whatever. That wouldn't have been enforceable. So, there are, we do address some of the concerns in there as well.
So, so far, we've got one amendment, as I recall. Were there any other amendments?
And then, of course, the major thing is, is taking all of this from the planning board and putting it in with the zoning board of appeals.
I just think we have enough on our plates. We don't need to be talking about signs.
You know what? I would agree with you, and although I think we do a fairly decent job with this, and if we can throw it back in the pans, it's fine with me. I feel the same way. I probably should look at the new one, but do you allow signs on, for instance, on subway, for instance, on two streets, they can have two sidewalk, two subway signs?
Another long conversation that we had. Let me look back.
I had brought the same issue up, Wayne.
Yeah?
I don't believe the sign bylaw committee supported it, essentially, I believe a business would be entitled to have a freestanding sign, a pole sign, and they could have one facade or wall sign facing one street but not the other.
Right.
Which I... I believe that is, has been carried forward and not changed. That being said, there is an interesting hearing process built into this bylaw. And I had a question, and Amy corrected me on where a, for example, a business owner can appeal to the zoning board for a, I think you call it a waiver of the sign restrictions, and would require a two-thirds vote to approve the waiver. So theoretically, let's say Dairy Queen is on the corner of Route 123 and Route 58, and let's say they're a brand-new business. Right now Dairy Queen has a sign facing Center Avenue, and they have a pole sign, but if for one reason they want them a sign on the building facing Center Avenue, a sign on the building facing Plymouth Street, and not do the pole sign, they would have to go in for a waiver to that. That's the way I understand it.
Correct. We did discuss having a sign, a size limitation, and allowing someone to split that size and have one on one street and one on the other, but I do not think that the bylaw review committee wanted that, that that was brought up.
I know I brought it up at the meeting. I had with them, and they didn't seem to bludgeon it. And the other thing, I know it was changed, Sean, I know you picked up at the meeting, and it looks like the signs in the windows are twenty-five percent of the window. I think it was forty, forty percent. I think you were trying to get it to fifty percent, and it's twenty-five percent now on. I don't know whether it's on this new one or not.
It is. It's on the bottom of page seven. Windows signs may not occupy more than twenty-five percent of the total window area on any building wall.
So, what we did with that was, we tweaked the language a little bit, because the way it was originally worded, trukies, for example, could have twenty-five percent of each window. What this does, it allows them to have, one window is all advertisement, but the rest are open. So, it treats it as a window wall versus each individual window. So, it gives them a little bit more flexibility, provided the total square footage, total area, is less than twenty-five percent.
Yeah.
Or to say it another way, if they had four equal-sized windows, the business owner could fill one window completely with signage and leave the other three open, or they could do a quarter of each of the windows.
Right.
It's up to them, but it's still, in total, has to be more than a quarter of the windows.
That was one of the examples, because they were all different windows, and one of them actually was a double window, and the others were smaller ones.
That mostly affects, like liquor stores or...
Convenience.
And for instance, we, one store in town, which I know Bob was the building inspector at the time, had them take, to take signs down. They went before the zoning board of appeals, and they said, no, you can put all those signs up. So, those are still legal in that store, evidently. Because they were permitted by his own...
Corner of Spruce.
Used to be Gates. I'm old. Not Gates.
Stones. No.
No.
No, I don't hear you talking.
Bushes.
Bushes.
Bushes. Anybody else have anything else?
Dr. Ruski's.
Yeah, right.
Yes.
I did, I just want to actually note, just note something, so that, and I did have one or two things that I had brought up. Let me start with, on the top of page five. And this is under the section of exempted signs. Originally, the bylaw shall notify the following signs, no sign permit will be needed. And number seven, again, a sign permit is not needed for a directional or traffic sign, not exceeding two square feet to direct traffic or indicate parking areas of restriction, such as enter, exit, no parking, which may also include the business logo.
Good. Another request of the chairman.
Thank you. They were listening, right, Rick?
And I think I had asked that it say the business name or the business logo. It might say Abington Bank, Enter. It might, or it could be the Abington Bank logo. Right now, you can only do the logo. Some businesses don't have logos. Some businesses would only need to use the word enter or exit. They don't need a logo for it. But right now, they cannot put the business name on there, but they can with the logo. I'm just, and I don't want to make this convoluted at town meeting. I'm going to step down as moderator for all these zoning, as a matter of one, I might be up there. They're still limited to two square feet, so if they put a name up, it's not going to be huge, because they need the word enter or an arrow or something.
I guess the question's going to be, what's the logo, if all you have is a logo, is your bank name? That is your logo, right?
Big V or something, or an S.
Yeah, I mean, you know, there are some weird, sometimes layouts where you're not sure where the driveway entrance is, and you see this thing that just says enter. You're still not sure what it...
You don't know who you're going into.
Exactly. So, entering, am I even...
Just drive along Route 53 and try to find a place.
Exactly. Now, again, I fall back to the, there is a provision where someone can apply for a waiver, so if you don't think that this is necessary minimum standard, then you would just, a business would have to go to a public hearing to get a waiver to put their name on the sign.
So, if you want to judge by size, that tile up there is four square feet, so half of that is two square feet, and that's how big of a sign we're talking about.
Trukies enter and exit signs would violate this new bylaw. They're too large. The new Dunkin' Donuts near Dairy Queen, I think complies with...
They're great. I mean, they look good, yeah.
And it has the logo on it, or the business, no, it needs the logo.
Most businesses though have a logo or a color or something associated with their name. Anybody that would ever have the money to put up lit signs, I mean, that's an expense all by itself, running wires out there. I can't imagine having a small, small business.
So, I just note this. Maybe it's not worth getting on the town meeting to make an amendment, because there is a waiver process.
I think, I think they'd get away with that. I...
Get away with that? What do you mean?
I say get away with it by going to the zoning board of appeals, and I think they would, I would think they would allow it if they had no logo, and that was, you know...
That's fine. So, I just want to note that. I don't want to...
In other words, I just, the problem with something like this is that there are so many issues in it. If we don't need to address it at this point, we might be better off.
Well, and that's where I think the waiver helps. I didn't understand it at first, but I think that does help. And there is no perfect sign by law, and this is an improvement to the current bylaw. No doubt about it. And we're probably, over time, going to find out things like, I wish we did this, man for man, in the future. But if I could move on.
Sure.
On that same page, down at the bottom, D, A, prohibited signs. I just want to highlight, I'm not going to put up this fight, that strings of lights are now considered to be prohibited signs. Now, this doesn't count on Christmas lights in your residential yard, but if a restaurant put a string of lights around their freestanding sign or outside their doorway, technically, it's an illegal sign. They have to take it down.
Like the alehouse?
Like the alehouse, like, I think Mirigaza sometimes has it around there. I'm saying that because I know this is being taped, so I think people have to, should know about that. I did not agree with this, but this is what is the bylaw, and I'm proposing to be amended. I just want to highlight that to people. Because I think there's a real slippery slope where you start talking about decorating and designing your business, the color of the business, the appearance of the business versus a sign. Personally, I don't consider a string of lights to be a sign. Is it intended to attract people? Yes. So, there's the, our, the thought process was, if you read our definition of sign, it says, "Any object, device, display, or structure placed outdoors, used to advertise, identify, display, direct, or attract attention to an object, person, institution." It's a very broad definition. String of lights falls into the definition of a type of marketing device that would fall as a sign. And what these are intended for are more of those LED strings that go around window frames or doors or, that are a nuisance. It's not intended to tell the alehouse to turn off its Christmas display. No, they have it year-round. They have, you know, the peak and everything. I'm just noting it. I'm not going to lay down meeting and finding all the strings of lights. And just to move to page eight, and I'm almost done. I'd like to start first on the bottom. This is the waiver process. I brought this up at the meeting, and there was a pretty good discussion about this. The sign bylaw committee decided not to change this, but I'd like to mention it to you guys. It's the public hearing part of it. So, this is now, again, a special type of hearing for signs, where you can go to the zoning board and ask for a waiver of one of these restrictions. Maybe the alehouse wants to keep their lights up on the sign. So, it says in the public hearing process, it basically mimics, almost mimics what you would for a regular zoning hearing, where the board shall have a hearing, they should decide. But it says, "Notice of the public hearing shall be given at least seven days prior to the hearing by publication and posting in by first-class mail to a butters and a butters-to-the-butters within three hundred feet of the property line of the subject property, blah, blah, blah." My concern was, can we delete the requirement for publication in the newspaper, or a waiver of a sign by law, if we're giving mailed notices to the butters, and we're publishing it, we're posting it on the town website and in the town hall? The cost of publication alone is usually somewhere in the neighborhood of three to four hundred dollars. And I thought, frankly, the number of people who read the enterprise and look at those, I didn't think it was worth another cost to a business who's looking for this as a waiver of some sort. So, I asked that the word "by publication" be stricken. The bylaw committee wanted to leave it here, so it is in bylaw as proposed.
My position is that we should change it to social media, because we'll get more people who see it, if you advertise on Facebook, than in the enterprise or the ledger. But that's not allowed under state law right now, so...
Right. Currently, I believe there's a bylaw where public hearings are posted on the town website, or I believe, like, don't hold me to that, because I kind of saw that coming. The town, the town anymore is now posted on the town website. Again, I...
I would agree. I mean, I have the problem with even items we do on the planning board, that the expenses, even the town has to go through. In the old days, some people said, well, we should be in the Quincy Patriot ledger, and we should be in the Brockman enterprise, both, because half the town got one and half the town got the other, and now maybe a quarter of the town gets one or the other. So, I, it's costing people money, and some people say, well, it's somebody else's money, but, you know...
Well, how does it work with the open public meeting law? I mean, is there any...
From the state standpoint, Amy, how does that affect with, as far as state regulations are concerned? Is that in the...
It's not. The open meeting law is only that you have to, it's only that you have to post your agenda with forty-eight hours ahead of time.
Okay.
You have to have an open meeting. You can't have closed doors and...
Right. And the other thing that, you know, it's always been seven and fourteen days. And I notice this is just strictly one ad within fourteen days.
Seven days, I think.
Seven days.
It doesn't actually speak to it.
Shall be given at least seven days prior to the hearing by publication and posting by first-class mail.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it would be one notice, right?
Yep, and it should be seven days. The other thing that I just noticed is up above that, under I two, there's a strange footnote that doesn't go anywhere.
I circled that, too. The double I.
Yeah, I...
But while you're on that one, messages, it says right now that for digital signs, messages may not be changed any less than once every sixty seconds unless a longer...
I thought it was longer than that, wasn't it before? No, it's always been sixty seconds.
Sixty seconds, right now, what's being proposed says that sixty seconds unless longer time is required by the zoning board of appeals. At one point, I want to... longer time is required by the zoning board of appeals. At one point, I wanted to suggest 30 seconds, but what, if anything is a compromise, I would suggest it would say, instead of saying unless a longer time is required by the zoning board, I would suggest unless a different time is required by the zoning board. Meaning if you go to the zoning board and say for whatever reason, I would like your permission for 30 seconds because I'm in front of the police department and we want to be able to change it every three seconds, whatever it is. There might be certain circumstances where the zoning board determines that for this sign, you shouldn't change it more than once every five minutes for whatever reason. But the way it's written right now, they can only increase it more than 60. They don't have the ability to decrease it. 60 seconds is the bottom line unless the zoning board changes it in some way. My suggestion was not, don't say longer time, say different time. Just.
Can we make that recommendation?
I think we can. I don't know if, I don't think that really affects.
I don't know if they actually will, but they can't right now without.
Well, it can't hurt anything. No.
I mean, there, there is at least one voice on the board who wanted it to say can't change it more than once a day.
I know.
So there are some fanatics when it comes to how often these things change.
Well, you know, and I go back to now that I've learned more about this waiver process. I mean, maybe that's the appropriate way to go is if someone, for whatever reason, I, I just tried to look at this as, with this applied. What is, if there was a reason why you needed it to be less than 60 seconds, at least you have the waiver process to go to ask them that, for that regard. So again, I'll keep a mouth shut during town meeting.
I, I think you would, you would go for the, before the zoning board of appeals for a special permit and a waiver.
Special permit because of the digital sign thing, right?
And then a waiver.
We just have to get rid of that double I.
Yeah.
I don't know what that is.
I don't see it.
That's one of your notes.
Oh, okay. I see.
What is it?
I had made some revisions back in time and I had put footnotes in to explain why I was changing things. So they just forgot to delete them.
Okay.
What else, Sean? Anything else?
Well, I think that was it. I mean, again, I, although I don't agree with everything, I, I give the board, the bylaw committee a lot of credit because it's, this was a massive undertaking. It's an improvement. Some businesses might not like it. Other businesses might like it that there'll be more hopefully uniformity in certain things. But going back to Wayne's original, like if you want to allow the internal illumination of freestanding signs, then I think you'd have to make that revision. And if you want to delete publication, that's up to you guys.
I thought we had on the internal lit sign, I thought we had a comment about that.
We wanted, so we need to do something to.
I thought was.
I guess we have to. I, I don't think they want to change it. So although I, it's, they did make a change, but it's not in here or something. Is that, you, Rick, you think they wanted to allow it, but it's not here?
I'm, I'm pretty sure that there's some language missing from this draft.
Can we make sure that's in there before?
Why don't you, can, is the best way to propose the amendment and then it can just be taken off at town meeting or?
Do you, does the planning board meet prior to town meeting? Or do you ever?
Probably should.
Because if you want, you could continue this, you could continue this and then see if the bylaw review committee is willing to make the amendment on town meeting floor and then you could recommend it with the amendment. Or you could just, again, do the same thing we were doing with marijuana and not recommend it and you're, have an explanation as to why.
I would suggest having a, scheduling a meeting, you know, an hour before town meeting to clear up any loose ends.
And the planning board was able to make a motion to approve the signed bylaw with the following one or two or three amendments. It'd be nice to be able to say, which has the support of the signed bylaw committee. And they can speak if they want to. Then that might be very helpful.
That's the way I would prefer to go tonight.
All right.
We talked about, you know, these, these amendments.
All right, Liz, you can handle that.
So no recommend, no recommendation on this yet?
Well, I, I would. I, I, I think it'd be nice for the planning board at this point to say that we, we approve this with these changes.
Yeah.
And have it go before the, the sign committee and then just be prior to the town meeting, you can find out how the sign committee feels for it. I'd, I'd rather have them in total favor of all of this than for us to go to battle on town floor. I don't, I'd rather have us stand up there and say.
It had to be posted seven days.
We agree with the signed bylaw committee. Yeah.
With, with these amendments?
We don't have to do these amendments because they're going to have it done.
I'm not sure, but.
That's the way I would go.
Do they put their recommendations in the warrant?
No, but Rick told me.
Yeah.
That they were holding.
The, the committee was looking to meet within the next two weeks. I think to tie up some loose ends. So we can make sure this is something that's.
And, and, and it'll be in the town warrant exactly the way, we don't have to make the amendments because you have it in there. Because I don't know when the printing is going to be.
It's, it's going to print very, very soon. So if your recommendations are not listed in the warrant, they're, and they're not apparently, there's no commentary in, in the warrant? There's, there's not?
Correct. Only vice grade recommendations, which will be to defer to the planning board on the zoning audit.
Okay. So.
That's correct.
I, I would.
So unless, so, so your recommendation would be on town meeting floor. So if you close this tonight, you can't change your recommendation.
And even if there is another addition out there, aren't we, by public hearing, working off of this one so that they kind of have to make an amendment to this?
Because this is not planning board article, yes. If this was a planning board article, the planning board could change it before it goes to publication, but it's not a planning board article. It's, it's a sign.
So, and I'm not telling you what to do, but if the board is inclined to make one or two amendments, you might want to take that, you could make the motion tonight, but you could also carry it forward and kind of, you know, not close the hearing for this and meet with the bylaw committee the night of town meeting to see if they support whatever amendment or amendments you do. And you could alter it again if you needed to. Is that fair?
Is that what you want to do, board members? All right. So we, we won't, we won't approve this, the sign by law. The other ones will. Any, any other things on the sign bylaws?
So just on Clay, you're going to meet with the signed bylaw committee?
We're looking to schedule a meeting for Wednesday, next Wednesday, the 16th.
Someone, or I guess a junior member would report to the planning board so they could make their.
Yeah.
Vote the night of town meeting.
And then there would be a handout or something with the change?
Yeah. If it's minor, we can just say it. If we know it, we'll try to have a PowerPoint slide.
Okay.
Which it does appear is going to be minor or limited anyhow.
All right. To amend Article five, use regulations by adding a new section that will limit the number of non-medical marijuana retailers to 20% or more of the number of licenses issued for the retail sale of alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on the premises pursuant to GLC 138, section 15.
So now, I, I think that this is, this could be unnecessary because this is in your overlay bylaw. So in the overlay bylaw is the exact same provision. So I'm not sure if you need, I'm not sure if you need a second, a separate article on it. You don't need a separate article on it.
Okay. So we just eliminate it? Is that all right with the board?
Is it yours or is it the support of select?
Support of select.
Recommend not to approve. It's already in the existing zoning bylaws, something like that.
Passover?
Passover, yeah. If they ask us why, we can explain. My recommendation is to pass over.
I, I, I actually, I don't even, I don't think that it's, it's in.
It's not going to be in.
It's not in the draft warrant.
No.
So they've already chosen to pass over it.
So.
So your recommendation right now would be to pass over it because it is, it is, it was advertised by you. Because your advertisement was much earlier. Okay. So. No.
Okay.
But in case anybody asks, it was passed, the recommendation is to pass over.
And then A to amend section 17526c by striking the whiz or storage space and add a new subsection D regulating storage pods, containers in all zoning districts or to amend section 17521 table of use regulations by prohibiting storage pods, containers in all zoning districts. The, the only problem I have with that is how long can you leave this, a pod there? And what is a pod? Is that just one company's storage unit?
Slash containers. I think by putting pods slash containers, they just covered everything. We all refer to those things as pods now.
I know it. It's like dumpsters, but, you know, but.
Isn't that a name brand?
It's like Kleenex. I mean, you ask for Kleenex, but you want tissue.
Yeah. I thought it was a brand name.
I thought it was like a brand name, pod. I thought it was.
Yeah, it is. I, I'm sure it's a brand.
It's corporate name.
It's the name they remember.
I, I do have a concern with the timeline, timeframe though.
Yeah. I mean, how many months are you going to let them have it there? Want to have it for a year?
Well, no, it's more, it's, right now it's 90 days. But my concern if someone is doing.
But this section, I didn't know what the rest of the section said.
My concern is if someone is doing a major house renovation, they may not be ready to get all their stuff back in in 90 days.
Right.
So now we're telling them, and I, I don't see an option for how they can extend it.
Would, would they, you know, just get an extension?
Can they? I mean.
Recommend the pass over.
That, that's my question.
So the, if, at the bottom, it says that the storage pod container shall be removed from the property upon the earlier of the cessation of construction work on the property for any 10 consecutive day period. A final sign off of the building permit and 150 days following the issuance of the building permit permitting such construction. So the building permit is only good for six months. So if they are done with construction, then they should get everything, I guess, out of the storage container into the house before looking for a CO. So I think that's the, that was the thought behind that.
It says up higher not to be maintained, not maintained for more than 90 days in any 12 consecutive month period.
Or.
And then it says provided such container is required as a result of ongoing construction at the property which is being undertaken in accordance with the law for the issued building permit.
Okay.
To Amy's point, in reality, if you are doing renovations or construction and you're, you've moved your furniture into a pod and you're looking for the occupancy permit, many times the inspections in the occupancy permit are done when construction is done before you move everything back in. So this, and so let's just say, so you, you put in your ventilation, you put in your plumbing and everything, you come back in and they sign off on the building permit. Everything's done. So now I will issue you an occupancy permit and you can move in here. I'm not going to move my furniture until I know I have the occupancy permit. This says.
You can't.
This, this says you have to take stuff out of the pod once the building permit's signed off. You might not yet have your occupancy. You know, I, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is here.
No, you're right though. You can't, occupancy is anything. So you can't move furniture and you can't move anything until you get it.
So what if it's, what if you, what does it suggest? I'm just, it's the first time I'm reading this. Under the second one, when it says final sign off of the building permit and.
What can I say? Put a time at the end of your CO.
Again, within 30 days after the issuance of a certificate of occupancy.
So 150 days following issuance of the building permit, within 30 days after the occupancy permit?
150 days is five months essentially, right? 155, 30 days roughly is five months. This is saying after five months, you got to take, you got to empty the pod or after construction has stopped and 10 days have passed, then you have to empty the pod or remove the pod. Or after the building permit has been signed off, you have to empty the pod. In real life, you can't empty the pod until you have occupancy. You need some time to then move it in once you get occupancy.
So why don't we just change two to, what do you say, 30 days after issuance of the COs?
Yeah. It's just in some circumstance, I don't know if the building inspector issues a CO on every renovation project. It's just, it's just doing a building permit with inspections.
I, I think that the purpose behind this is to avoid having storage containers.
Permanently.
Permanently. And also for, for, someone's going to tear down their house and completely rebuild it to not have all of their stuff because it's only a 1,700 cubic feet storage container. So you're not going to have your entire, all of your belongings in there.
But what, what I haven't actually, I've even seen a couple, I think I've ever seen one, my 23rd, but where they're using the pods to basically, it's almost kind of living. It's become a shed. I've seen one where the door is open and the guy is sitting on a seat inside there and reading his paper and drinking.
Yeah. That, that is the purpose behind.
It's more to get around from having to get a building permit for a garage. They just plop one of these down there and push the cars and their tools and anything else and that's their garage.
What if you simply just said at the end of that, when it says 150 days following issuance of the building permit, comma, unless otherwise extended by the building inspector? Then if there's extenuating circumstances and they need 30 more days to move the stuff in or 10 more days or whatever, up to the building inspector.
By the time the building inspector took you to court to make it, get rid of it.
I mean, most of these will, will work their own magic. 150 days following the building permit, most renovation projects are going to be done within five months. I mean, people are not going to want to move out of the house then. So that will cover most of those types of things. If your house burned down and you had a mobile home and you stored some stuff, Amy's right, you're not going to have everything in there.
So, so on this one, on, does the, the planning board is recommending the first option, correct? So the second option is just banning it completely everywhere?
Yes.
Okay.
So they would have to go to the zoning board to get a waiver variance.
For anything, yeah.
For anything, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
We're in favor of that? Or not? Or not? Well, which one?
The first one.
The first one.
First one, yes.
The first.
I see how they printed a alternative thing or not in the album like that? Or?
No, it hasn't been printed in the warrant yet. No. That was a mistake. So recommending, and then with the, with the change, with recommended.
So they're going to have to recommend?
A recommended, yeah, a recommended amendment at the end. Okay. To add otherwise, unless otherwise extended by the building department?
Right.
Okay.
Building inspector, I guess.
That's why I always say building department. I never know what he is.
Is that right? Okay.
Because I think they change. Unless otherwise extended by the, okay.
The board in favor of that? First article?
Yes.
Motion made. Some moved seconded. All those in favor? Are we done?
You have to go back to your last, all the May ones, all the April ones.
Where is that now?
Can you pause it a second while?
Isn't that the one where it starts at 16?